Calling this meeting to order. It is January 23rd, 2020. The Planning Board regular session. Roll call.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Blaney.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli is absent. We have six of seven. We have a quorum. We're ready to go.
Great. Can you please rise if you can? Where's the flag?
Inhale and rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any minutes, Mr. Secretary?
Fortunately, no, until we get our secretary back.
Okay.
And stuff.
Then we will move on to... We have no work session, so...
I'll get you started, okay?
You're starting. Anthony is starting with number four. Fisher Organization.
So this is a two-lot subdivision in Flanders on Flanders Road, properties in the R-ten zoning district, an arctic lot, a sensitive area. We did a pre-application on this January 24th, 2019. So it's set to expire, marrying just the one-year extension to bring this to January 24th, 2021. And I handed out the aerial and the map to familiarize yourself with the two-lot subdivision.
So the county of Suffolk owns those two parcels?
Yeah. There's existing residents on the property and some by the end too.
No trail issues on this?
No. So I would recommend extending it to January 24th, 2021.
Motion?
Second. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent.
Then I have number 10s off the agenda, Cam, do you want them? Yeah, I have two off the agenda there.
Number 10.
12, Carroll Butterlane. This is to reschedule hearings for a four-lot subdivision on Butterlane. This is the industrial subdivision that we looked at. And we need to reschedule the hearing for this February 13th. I know that there are violations on the property. I'm going to go back out there tomorrow. They've been noticed that they're operating in some type of...
Sand and gravel, mountains of dirt.
So I will address that in the meantime. It's scheduled for February 13th.
Is that too soon?
No, right, Karen? Okay.
I'll move it. Second.
Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, six in favor, one absent.
And then I just have number 14.
Willow Square?
Mm-hmm.
Handing out a copy of the aerial and the map, and then a copy of the resolution as well. So Willow Square, this is the property on Sabonic Road in Tuckahoe. It's got the multiple cottages on there and the single-family residence. They're in a 4,000 square foot storage building and to attach decks to four of the cottages that were shown on the site plan. The project required relief from the zoning board for the setback. Go from 50 feet to 30 feet. It was successful and obtained in full week. And so we're here to do a site plan approval and have the resolution. But I hand it out. The first page just goes through the project's history when everything's submitted to CEQA and when the zoning board issued their approval. Page two, we have the comments from the engineer. Just a bunch of little items that they want to address. That's obviously going to be incorporated into our resolution of approval. On page three, comments from the fire marshal's office. The area serves public water and water beans and fire hydrants, so there's no issues there. The ARB approved the project at their meeting on January 7th. And then I have the approval with the conditions. Changes to the site plan, compliance with the requirements of the town engineer. And then to add notation to the map stating two things. One, that the buffer landscaping has shown the approved landscaping plan to be maintained by current and all future property owners. And any proposed changes are set by state and subject to planning board review and approval. And two, the storage garage remains configured as shown in the approved floor plan. The use exclusively for storage of equipment used to maintain the premises, personal belongings of the tenants of the cottages, and the applicant and his family's cars. Changes to the use of the storage building shall be subject to planning board review and approval. We're putting those as notations on the map, but we're doing them as covenants as well. That came out of the zoning board decision that required that. So it makes sense just to add notes to the map and do a covenant. Two, changes to the building elevations. There's a discrepancy between the building elevations and the color samples that were provided by the applicant, and that just needs to be revised accordingly. Break up the mass of the building. The rear of the building is just a blank wall, so it's subject to high windows. Even though it's going to be heavily landscaped facing the neighbors, some high windows, I think, will break up the mass of the building. It'll let some light into the building without compromising its safety. And then general conditions of the approval. No outdoor storage. All signage is subject to planning board review and approval. The screening of any HVAC mechanical equipment. The prohibition of the use of dusted-on lighting fixtures. No additional lighting on the property without planning board approval. All lighting shall be shielded and projected downward. Arrange for the pre-construction meeting with the engineering division two weeks prior to the start of construction. And then on the next page, submission of the declaration of covenants and restrictions, one for the buffer landscaping and one for the use of the storage building per the zoning board approval. Compliance with the requirements of the town engineer. Submission of an engineering fee in the amount to be determined for the review and inspection of the site plan application. File of the notarized affidavit indicating compliance with the conditions of the site plan approval. And then submission of six sets with all the conditions of approval, a fixed sheet, and then prior to the issuance of a CEO, a maintenance file having a term of two years to ensure landscaping is maintained.
Okay, we don't have a landscaping plan here.
No, I do have one.
So how deep is the buffer?
It covers the 30 feet to the back of the setback.
Questions?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you.
Mary, what do you have on the line?
The line.
Number one. That's BH680.
Yeah, so I'll pass them until you're done.
Yeah, it's all done.
We got that message.
I know you're a message operator.
Once everybody has one, I'll get started.
Sorry, I took two.
So what you have there, you have the, for a pre-application, subdivision map and the aerial, and also a section of the zoning code that I'll go over to you best quickly. This is a pre-application for a two-lot subdivision in, so, in Waterville. On the three-acre parcel known as Lot Two of the map, the second revision of the minor subdivision in Simone de Carrilis, CR-80 zoning district at 680 Scottopol Roads, also in the Aquifer Protection overlay district. The Abodeau district. Two-lot standard plan. One will be a conforming lot at 7,120 square feet. And the other lot will actually be a non-conforming lot at 43,382 square feet with the intent to preserve this parcel by landmarking and seeking variances through the ZBA. And that's pursuant to 330-167-J, which you guys have a copy of. This gives the zoning board the ability to grant variances in order to preserve the property.
So you're preserving the lot with the house?
With the house.
And the structures on it?
Correct. The Landmark and Historic Board has already seen the property in regards to an addition, and they also noted in their report that they have no objection to this being landmarked. So this time we're just looking to deem it complete and to set a hearing. The only other thing that I could see is that this does have a no further subdivision covenant. Without planning board approval, it does not require a hearing. So I know there's been some different methods of what time we want to do this with the board. I mean, I think this could be done concurrently prior to the issuance of the pre-application report, but I'll leave it to the discretion of the board.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's within the board's discretion. There's no public hearing required.
No public hearing required. So why don't we do it now?
I don't have a resolution prepared, and the applicant hasn't submitted for it yet, but we can do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So what's our action now?
Deemed complete and set a hearing for the 27th of February.
February 27th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move it.
Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent.
Moving on to number five. Move Song Two and Three. This is a request for a 90-day extension for Signature. It's a lot line modification in Bridgehampton. This will take us, I believe, to May 4th, 2020. This is their first extension request.
I'm sorry, what was that, what date?
May 4th, 2020.
May 4th, it's an extension of 90 days. Moved by Phil, second by Robin, all in favor. Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent.
And on to number seven.
Benedict Larson.
Benedict Larson, another extension request. This involves a piece of property that the town will be requiring as a one-lot subdivision with open space, where the town's going to gain a nice little marina in West Hampton.
Oh, yeah.
Looking to still meet the conditions.
Right by the condition.
With the DDC now, so this will be their third extension request.
And it complies with, is it the master plan, no net loss of marinas?
Correct. And that'll take us to May 9th, 2020.
To May 9th. Motion?
Motion.
By Robin, second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent.
And on to number 15. Two signs.
Is this, so it's going to be a plumbing company as well?
Yes.
They're a large company. I see them advertising on TV.
Yeah, this is, Blackland's being acquired by this company.
Ferguson.
Ferguson.
Oh, Ferguson.
If you've seen the ads on TV, the husband and wife are like in the bathroom in their bathroom in pajamas, and he's shaving because it's such a beautiful place that they've decided to live there while they're looking at what they're going to do with their house.
Not exactly the money.
Yeah. Obviously, I watch too much TV.
This is the request, essentially they're redoing existing signs, a condition of the original approval in 2009 that the planning board had to do approval for all signage on the site. This is on the corner of 39 and David White's. There's an existing wall sign on the David White's side, on County Road 39's side, and then there's a monument sign also on the County Road 39's side. Essentially, what you see there, there should be a 14-by-four wall sign, a 12-by-four wall sign, and then the monument sign is the last one. This went to the ARB twice. So the first time they only reviewed one sign, they just didn't know if there's more. They reviewed the rest on Tuesday, indicated recommended approval. We have all of the paint information, and they're just still continuing to conditionally approve this. Subject is showing that they're going to use the existing lighting that's there, which are down facing Boosnecks, and the removal of, there's a monopole sign, which is not co-compliant, which they were supposed to take down at the time of the original approval, which gave us the force of gravity to take down.
So they're the only business on the line in the sign?
Correct, just that.
And these are the same size as what's currently here?
Correct. So there's no internal moving?
No. Motion, Robin?
Motion.
Second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed, extension; six in favor, one absent. Near Flanders Road?
Flanders Road.
Draft decision for special exception.
19?
Number 19. Well, I passed mine in. Oh my God.
I'll have to restart the whole night.
No, I haven't.
There's aerials coming around on the site plan. Just a little brief intro on this. This is for a house in the office district as required by town code. To do a house in the office district, it's a special exception from the planning board. Very straightforward. Claire's handled a number of these right in that same area. It's on 5,000 square foot parcel, which is single and separate from all the other parcels. Type II action under CEQA. We didn't refer this out because there's no commercial implications for this at this time. If it was to come back as an office at that time, we'd do referrals for cycling with you. A public hearing was held for this on the 9th of January, which was closed with a 10-day written comment period. I don't think there are any written comments or public comments at the meeting right now. The only issues, I have a couple findings. Just recommending that they reduce the front yard setback on this to 30 feet. So if it ever does become an office, they have room to do a few parking spaces in the back. And there's what appears, there's a shed or, you know, a small stand that straddles this property and the property to the east just to remove all structures or make the structures conforming on-site and then to show their limited clearing because this is in the Aquifer Protection overlay district and in the central prime bank's compatible growth area. So they're limited to 75% clearing. They just have to show what they have. And then if not, I'm recommending that they'll, you know, do a site disturbance prior to the issuance of a CEO.
Do they have to put an IA system in?
I believe they do, but that'll be for the health department at the moving ground stage.
Do you know if it's been cleared? It's awfully hard to tell from the aerial.
Yeah, it's, from what it looks like, it's mostly cleared. There might be a few trees in the back with such a small parcel. They'd have to re-vedge 1,000 square feet, which is, I have as a conditional approval if they are overclear.
I think that's used.
Is this going to be a formal housing or is this just?
No, just a single-family house.
Single-family.
Yeah. And if you'd like, I can go through the conditions if everyone's clear. Changes to the plan, as I said, revise site plan to reflect a minimum front yard setback for the principal structure of 30 feet. And to note the existing limit of clearing of the biplane calculations prior to signature. Remover making forming all existing structures on the site prior to signature. File a notarized affidavit indicating compliance with the conditions of site plan approval. Submission of sets of plans for signature. And then prior to CEO, if the subject property is found to be overclear, a site disturbance application must be submitted and completed prior to the issuance.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Dennis, your question?
If you move the house four or five feet, you see the space between the septic and the house?
Yeah.
That could conceivably be a handicap parking space. Now, if that house is moved forward, we'd eliminate that space. Plus, I don't know, moving a house closer to Flanders Road.
Yeah, my concern was if they had to re-vedge in the back, it would just be tight if to do handicapped, any parking in the back.
But right now, there's a space in the front.
Yeah.
Even a turnout space so people wouldn't have to back out onto Flanders Road. They could, let's say they're parking the driver, they could actually back into that area, and it's almost like a T-area. If we move the house forward, it's going to eliminate that, I think. So...
It's up to the board. My concern was that if it becomes commercial, we just have enough space in the back to operate and park it, you know, provide parking.
What is in the back, do you know?
It's just, it's a vacant parcel besides that shed at this point. I believe at the public hearing, the applicant said there might be some bricks piled up in the back, but nothing, no structures.
Well, that's a good point, though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But we can keep it as is.
Okay, so a lot, but well-mannered.
Modified.
Modified to eliminate that condition.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Dennis, we're eliminating that. And Dennis?
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
That's it?
Claire, you're up. Do you want to do any little?
Yeah.
Housekeeping?
Yep.
So number?
Number two.
Two.
Long Island Automobile Collectors. This is for completeness. You've seen this a couple times. Pre-appet for zoning board appeals. And we issued a negative declaration on the project. This is for North Six Offices and Storage, which is granted approval for change of non-conforming use in the rear buildings. I'll show you some of that. So a new office building in the front. This larger building that was along, that was a museum at one point is being refurbished to look in the front to appear like a museum, but in the back with these storage units. So there's a pre-appet for it, it's still valid. We brought up a couple issues, like the connection and the access on the road. But we have the basic information to deem it complete and scheduled.
Do they have any documentation of that road that they have put in from the business?
It wasn't there.
It wasn't there, yeah.
If you look at the aerial, it wasn't there.
So we're going to have some conditions on that when we move forward?
This is a special exception.
It is not. All they're proposing is the office building and the storage use they got for the rear buildings. It is all permitted uses in this area.
These are merged parcels?
They are not merging the parcels.
So that large parcel is not part of this application?
This, this large parcel? This whole thing is one application?
Okay, so...
It splits out. So this is our 20. So the use of these buildings had the variances. And then this is just storage?
The museum building?
It's just storage. It's not a carting business or anything like that. It's just indoor storage.
Those are the existing buildings on the premises now?
Existing buildings on the premises. So it's not a special exception.
They're porta-potties.
Yeah, they're storing porta-potties.
Wouldn't you want them to show the property line in the site plan?
This is one property, except there is a split on the zone line.
Across or?
And that's because the two school districts. This is not a, this is not a property line. It's just the zoning line.
Okay.
It's a zoning line.
Yeah.
Now, these are going to be offices in the front, your building?
This one building is offices.
Do we know anything about the other North Six building? Are they moving offices into here?
We can ask the applicant, but there was no vermin that I understood.
No comment.
The applicant's represented.
There'll be a public hearing, Claire?
Huh?
There'll be a public hearing? I know we get a plea submission.
Yes, we want a public hearing on this.
Yes, yeah.
The applicant speak.
Joe Lombardi from that meeting room.
Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you? My understanding is they will be moving the office from the existing offices and moving them to this new complex. And this will be the headquarters.
For North Six. Any idea what they're going to do with the other building or you don't know?
Sell it. Oh, there we go.
Sell it.
Sell it.
Sure, we can move the planning board there. They have more room. Okay, thanks.
And just a point of clarification about the access drive that connects.
Yeah.
It was brought up during the pre-application process. When we had our traffic study done, they took that into account and they recommended that it remain because it eliminates, there's going to be a lot of interaction between these two sites rather than trucks going out onto Sandy Hollow Road and then coming back into the site. It's felt that having a connection would be helpful.
So that was a traffic study that was done, what, for the Neoween property or for this property?
For this property.
Okay. So we would have conditions to define that road if we, to determine the width, the length, the configuration. Okay. Thanks.
So recommending deeming complete and scheduling a public hearing for February 27th.
I'll move it.
Moved by Dennis, second by John Blaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Six in favor, one absent. Neowea Golf Club, Claire?
Yes. This is a site plan application for a new maintenance building and a teaching facility associated with the driving range.
Yeah, thank you.
The user boards. Pointed out. So this would be the Neowea Golf Club. Start here. There is, this is the driving range, this is a small teaching facility here. And then with the existing maintenance building, I'm going to show you here, maintenance building, they're doing environmental center because of the pesticides and having to control all that. It is a type II action because the buildings are less than 4,000 square feet.
When you say environmental center, can you just define that? Teaching center?
No, the environmental center would be part of the maintenance building. So that would be where they'd store any pesticides, chemicals they would use. That's where they'd use the protocols for, of course, in terms of maintenance. But it's called an environmental center now because they have, they do have protocols that they have to follow.
Right.
So I'm going to have the options.
Okay.
More, but I recommend any maintenance of the site. And scheduling a public hearing. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Do you want to say something? You came all this way.
Tony, and the architect for Neowea Golf Club. If you want, I can run through the buildings quickly.
I do have a question. You gave up that other storage business that was?
That's what I was going to let you in.
Okay. Because that was the very controversial?
Yeah, here's a, a little bit easier because these are colored. The site plan's there because this one here isn't as helpful. Hopefully I can point because I think I have to stand over here, but that's in the way if I bring it closer. So as Claire was pointing out, there's two buildings that they're looking to build. I can flip through it there. Slavongre, single-story buildings. One of them is Cedar Shingle, it goes on the range. It's for teaching golf, it's for hitting a ball.
Is that the A on this?
Yep, that's, yep, that's A.
Thank you.
You can see it's 800 feet from the property line. The other structure, 350 feet, that's the environmental facility that Claire was mentioning. And as she has pointed out, that's so that we can meet the requirements for what Southern County is looking for for containment and everything. There's a recycling wash system in there where they take the vehicle down to it, wash it on a washpan, and that water is continually recycled, not let out into a storm.
And that's going to be built in that tree area?
Yes, in the area B. And so the reason that we, for the environmental center going where it is, is that there was a previous application a couple years back. And it was to locate soil bins on that site plan over there in the lower right of the facility. And those, the soil bins were being relocated because there was going to be this environmental center placed where the existing soil bins are, which is up by the mark. By putting the environmental center where it was... By putting the environmental center where we're showing it on here involves taking out a few trees, we can leave the soil bins where they are, we don't have to build within that other area. And because we're taking out some trees, you'll see in the application of the old site, we're going to replant over there. So, along the, along, there's a planting plant in there for along the property line with some trees and other, other materials.
That's good.
None of this, from what I can see from this picture, is well within the golf course, so it's not adjacent to any of the homes?
Correct.
That are along the road?
Eight hundred feet for the one of them and 350 feet for the other. And they're also, because of the topography, there are graded drawings in there, the buildings are down, so that if there were no trees or anything, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the contours. And for the environmental center, you can see it's being placed behind the existing building, which is there.
Do you have monitoring wells on this golf course? No, you don't. This is pre that.
Yes.
Do you use, what kind of chemicals do you use on the course?
Not being the superintendent, I couldn't recite out the exact items that are, the reason for the environmental center is to make sure that the practice adheres to the Southern County requirements.
Thanks.
Yep. Thanks. So, recommending deem complete and scheduling a public hearing for February 27.
We have, we have quite a few now for 27?
No, I think that's the third, that's it, so it'll be four.
Four.
But I'm going to do, I'm going to do one more, probably be four total.
Four total, okay. Motion by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Okay. Do you want to stop him from answering your hand?
No.
Do you want these back, then?
Number 16.
16.
Kathleen, that's Kathleen's stuff.
Is this different than what we were sent?
Uh, it's only the difference from yesterday?
Yeah.
Is that I actually put the trustee's comments right into it.
Oh, you did, okay.
But it's a fairly, the same thing otherwise.
Big change from what you gave us to expel.
Only?
Not really, it was only the public comments.
Only that all the written public comments that came after are now inserted also.
This one has parking for a golf course.
Oh, yeah.
It says what?
That, that is the argument that the applicant made as the equal parking. Because there's no parking for a day camp in our code.
Got it.
So, in the legal process, the applicant made the argument that is equivalent to a golf course. Golf course holes were equal to tennis courts, and that was the statement.
That was not clear to me.
I understand, it definitely, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of information in here, so we're going to get through it.
And so, you added the trustee letter?
And I added trustee letter, public comments since the last meeting. Do you want this?
Yes, can we have, yeah, maybe over here?
I'm going to put it where the other one was.
It's really.
We're doing one, only a board person today, so it's.
No, she's just putting up the stand. The map is coming, that's not what we're.
It's not the web map.
That is not the web map.
What did it work?
I mean, if you can do it up there. We have a big map.
Yeah, we have a big map on there, okay? But there are some maps for you, Lance Beating lighting a map.
That's what we're sharing, we're sharing. Share that, we'll share this.
I'll let you find it, the maps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Need some help, Claire?
Can you bring it a little closer to fire when you get it up?
Everything down here is in the way.
Yes, great, thank you.
How's that?
That's good. Better.
Except for this end of the table.
Kind of a mess, yeah.
I did get a big plan, it's another big plan.
Okay. This is a planning plan.
Um, so just so you know, because of the holidays and everything, you know, first opportunity, we put on the staff reports to pass out at the last meeting, not having the public comments obviously call in. Um, so we're at action deadline today, and the applicant, on the record, at the last opportunity, said he would be willing to grant a one-day extension until the February 13 meeting. So, if you want to just pass that resolution now, if you, if the applicant, you can get back business.
Motion to extend for one day?
Second.
Motion by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Well, I guess, I said it was going to be wrapped up.
I was just saying, trying to get through the site plan and the safety plan. Finally, five feet, the maps are five, so we're winning.
I think you're familiar with the application, so I'm going to pass that information out. Um, the variance was granted by the zoning work appeals.
Are you going to go through your, you're going through your reporting, so we can comment?
Uh, yeah, do you want to do, this is, that's my other question, I was going to go through, work through the referrals, and then once we get into the site plans, maybe you want to ask questions as you go, because that, those are just the information that we received, obviously, for consideration, does that sound good? You can interrupt me, though.
Yeah, we'll interrupt.
I don't want to talk for an hour.
You want, sure, we will.
So, the variance was granted for the years of March 7 of 2019, and it's described in the reports. The public comments received at the two public hearings, October 24, 2019, and December 12, 2019, as noted, impacted Little Fresh Pond, impacted Oppafer, Watch High, should use, and that loss, I A systems, no use of pond is a condition, limit use of fertilizer, blue-green algae bloom in Little Fresh Ponds, applies site plan standards to the project, EIS pond samples faulty, groundwater does not flow around the ponds, massive outbreak of blue-green algae in Little Fresh Pond, similar to Lake Eggwell, reopen secur due to change in circumstances, does not meet natural feature standards, traffic issues, turning site distance, dangerous for children, intersection is a site plan standard, nearby intersection is failing, blue-green algae is toxic, cancer-causing, poisons dogs, blue-green algae concentration in September, 200,000. 2010, Little Fresh Pond declared eutrophic by EEC, caused by increase in phosphorus and nitrogen, changes in temperature and climate change, surface runoff of dairy systems contributes, impact of noise of camp, noise in fans can occur indoors, concerned with discrepancies in map specifics and planning landscaping, concern with activities in the area of the former basketball court and tennis court to the north, additional screening should be added to hide parking and buffer use, concerned with train site distances are flashing, beacons being added, north side of property established as a quiet zone, private public address system, six-foot stackade fence proposed to the north should be maintained, doubt fence will help with noise, consider stronger fence, concerned with 17 street lamps with height of 12 feet, concerned with number of kids and counselors, of the five standards for camps encode, use violates for them, lawns are green, camp fertilizers affecting drinking water, prohibited chemicals require monitoring wells, and camp too big. Comments received prior to and during the provided 30-day incumbent period as noted below. Screening of parking recreation area with vegetation, no better noise barrier, plan shall be labeled with existing and intended activities, website indicates the location of existing courts activities, reject proposal due to impact to neighborhood and limits, existing noise is a nuisance, camp does not fit in community, blue-green algae outbreak in Little Fresh Pond, new evidence, EIS did not address the blue-green algae bloom, deny camp due to traffic, nitrogen loading and noise, replace northern sports courts with located sleeping cabinets, reopen SECRE, supplements, EIS, groundwater and pond impacts not addressed, algae bloom needs further analysis, analysis of camp, impact of camp versus lakeside residents in the bottom of Little Fresh Pond, Atlantic White Cedar Swamp near campsite, inadequate existing sanitary system for camp, inadequate site distances from pond drugways, no new development around the ponds, existing sanitary systems are obsolete and releasing nitrogen into groundwater, landscaping, chemical fertilizers and vehicles contribute to nitrogen and phosphates in the soil and groundwater, site plan standards require the planning board to assess the basic natural features, project does not meet the objectives, site plan review, water samples improperly, water samples improperly filtered. Traffic access and site distances are unsafe for buses, nearby intersections are failing or inadequate, report from SMBIL Consulting concluding groundwater from site goes into Little Fresh Pond, report from Chris Gobler concludes groundwater from site goes into Little Fresh Pond, which funnel fuels water quality problems and need to be reduced. Report from.
Wait, wait, say that again?
Yeah, yeah.
Claire, that last one again, please?
Yes. Says, report from C Gobler concludes groundwater from site goes into Little Fresh Pond, which fuels water quality problems and blue-green algae blooms.
Thank you.
Report from WSP, a hydrologic, et cetera services firm, concludes the groundwater samples were filtered improperly and therefore the nitrogen and phosphorus levels are not reliable.
Claire, in the upper portion, I believe the, one of them is incorrect, it said in 2010, Little Fresh Pond declared eutrophic by New York State State, that had to be 2020?
No, 2010.
It was 2010.
2020, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That information's in the EIS. So, this is the history, SECRE, I think you've all lived in, I don't know if I repeat the dates, but it's all on there in terms of, in terms of parts of name, so I'm going to go with the details. Memo, town engineer, September 27. One is the speed requirement, two is swift, three, the slope of the tennis court should be verified to confirm that they all pitched south to the parking lot.
Can we just, one question, that map, we don't have individuals on, correct?
You don't?
You don't.
That is the landscaping.
This is all landscaping, and this is from 20?
This is current, this is the site plan, this, oh, this is the lighting plan you're looking at.
This is the lighting plan, this is the landscaping, but we don't have.
Yeah, there's another, another site plan?
We don't have a site plan.
There is another, I mean, we could pull out another site plan, that is the other site plan that you have in front of you, it's the one in front of the two of you.
Do we have?
Do you want that one, so you can lock in, can you refer to this, this one?
Well, I think, could we have another site plan?
Well, I.
Does Wayne have one with him?
Looking at a lighting plan and the planting, I need a site plan.
You need a site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can share one, but.
Yeah, share that.
In fact, it makes sense to, because. Yeah.
The pond is on the other side here.
I just wanted to make a comment, whether it's, um. I know you.
Yes, please.
I know it's, you typically don't record it, but in your whole secret review, the planning board adopted a finding statement. Remember, that was a split vote, that was a three-to-four vote, where three of us did not approve the finding statement. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Anything else you need for your vote?
No, now you're going to the town engineer, right?
Yes. Number four, the handicap parking signage, five, elevations, six is demonstration runoff for the sports court, seven, existing cottage appears to be incorrectly located in the survey map.
Okay, can we stop, can we go back to demonstrate how the runoff from the proposed sports court will enter system number five? Is system, what is system number five?
So, and that's not going to be reflected on?
Excuse me?
Drainage.
It's a drainage system.
Right.
So, and where is it on the map?
You're not going to see it on the site plan, because you're going to see it on the drainage plants. So.
Do you have a general location?
Where's the sports court?
Yeah, okay.
There, so.
And the pond is right over here.
And drainage five is just where?
She said it was here, so.
Oh, it's, oh, it's.
Oh, no, no, drainage five means, talks about the area.
Okay.
So, there's going to be area, drainage areas for the property, one, two, three, four, five, and this would be the collecting area for the drainage.
Where is the collecting, it's right there. So, they're asking for demonstration on how the runoff will? Go to the side. Enter system number five.
Right.
Okay. This is where, this is, here's five.
Yeah, yeah, here's.
Yeah, and here's this five. Just to show you, I'm looking at the same thing. Okay, thank you, just wanted.
Spot elevations depicting conformers with ADA regulations.
Okay, existing cottage number eight appears to be incorrectly located on the survey map when compared to the aerials. I'm just trying to get my bearing, so, so existing cottage eight, where is that right now, and where is it supposed to be?
This is cottage eight.
Well, that's what I.
Eight is.
Existing cottage eight is right on.
And where is it supposed to be, where, do they think it's supposed to be?
He's saying that the aerial, which I think you do have in front of you.
Yeah. I mean, the material is a little deficient. I'm just trying to get, so I can understand what they, what they're raising here. So, where is a, according to the engineer, where does he believe that building should be?
Oh, he just says it's a different.
Oh, okay.
Answer a lot of his questions.
Oh.
Well, maybe it would be helpful if you just jumped in, if we asked.
Okay.
That would be helpful, yeah.
So, for the record, Wayne Brilino, shake off since we were, and this, so, who does this, Jeff Butler, our engineer, and this report was given to us back in September, and back in September, Jeff corresponded with the town engineer to understand each of his comments.
Oh, thank you.
He had revised all the plans, and he hasn't finalized particular condition 22 or the final script, so everything that's listed there, we have addressed and modified. So, for example, the issue with the aerial photographs, and the engineer was wrong.
Okay.
The surveys are accurate, you know, and the plans are accurate, so.
So, A.
And that was discussed and corrected.
So, seven should be omitted.
We haven't submitted and got them signed off, because we're waiting for the full review, then we'll submit revised plans. So, for example, the conservation work, they made a recommendation of moving that sports court in the southwest out of some slope area, you'll see, we'll have a plan to show you, the engineer was able to do that, but once, and, and, so that will be a final plan, which will revise after any and all the comments we get today, and will submit to the town engineer.
So, I can fairly say that number six and number seven here have already been taken care of.
All of them, all of them, other than numbers one and two on county, they have been addressed.
Have all been addressed on this plan, thank you.
Not the plan in front of you.
Not this plan.
We've addressed them.
So, where we can't see.
So where we can't see that? You don't have a revised plan for us to take a look at?
We don't have a revised plan yet because we want to revise it only once. Including one and two. Including one and two plus
And plus everything else we might comment.
Everything else you may want, and do it all at once rather than piece
Okay, it's a little hard, you have to understand, it's a little difficult for us because we're working blind here. So whatever help you can give would be appreciated.
So it's fair to say that three, everything but one and two, you will address and it will be adjusted on the plan?
One and two, we're expecting it to be a condition of final approval.
So everything else has, you have already agreed to address.
So we'll provide you with a plan before your next meeting.
That's
Okay. One and two to address.
Okay.
Okay. Fire, you're up to the fire district. No response to date.
Oh, did we respond to, you read all the other town engineers?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We're all good.
The fire, this hit no response.
How is that, that they haven't responded?
They frequently do not respond if they have an issue.
At all?
Just wait till they want something.
I mean, they had no, they had no requirements for dormitory, for fire safety, none of that.
Well, the fire prevention, which
Our own fire office responded.
Will speak to that issue. So, October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, all demolition reconstruction work will require building permits from billing departments. Access appears to be adequate. All cabins and buildings on property should be identified and marked as required by code. Street address of the property shall be posted. Property served by a private fire service name and is provided with fire hydrants. The fire hydrants are required to be tested for functionality and watch supply capabilities. Documentation of testing shall be provided to this office. Structural fire and life safety concerns will be addressed during the building plan review process.
Does that mean sprinklers and stuff like that?
Oh, yes. Public buildings would all have sprinklers.
I'm sorry?
Public buildings would all have sprinklers and fuel pumps, yeah.
So that would, that would come next.
That would be during the building process. Okay, health departments.
Which sprinklers during the, sorry, what did you say, Claire?
During the building process, they review the building's interior. They're looking at the site plan at this point.
Okay.
The interior of buildings, the sprinklers, other requirements will be during the building process. The health department, February twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen, they received an application. Resubmission was submitted. It was received, October sixteenth. We asked for a site plan, clarification of use, specific vacancy, office of pollution control approval for swimming pool and secret determination. They maintain jurisdiction of the project.
So this was three months ago, right?
Yes.
They, they had a resubmission on, three months ago?
Yes.
And they're reviewing the revised site plans, CO, secret determination. But they have yet to say that they want an IA system, all IA systems throughout, right?
I have not seen any documentation. But they're going to speak to that. There are going to be some IA systems proposed.
But we may, we may make a recommendation that all the systems be IA, given the sensitivity of the property.
Okay.
I also have another question, which was one of my reasons, maybe this is the right time to bring this up. One of the reasons I voted not to accept the original application is that the grandfather septic that's been approved by the health department suggests that those cottages were used as dormitories. And my understanding is they were not. And therefore, I think it appears that the grandfather septic is overstated. So that would be another reason that everything on this property has to be IA'd.
I understand. Good point.
D E C?
The actual Department of Economic Development said it was meant on local determination. The E C, October eighth, two thousand nineteen, sends a letter, they need initial review, and the following comments, subject property detailed in the site plan prepared by Hands Out to Bay is located in the vicinity of a New York State regulator wet, freshwater wetland, and also within the jurisdictional corridor of the endangered species act. Any regulated activity proposed on such a property may require a permit from the D E C in accordance with the environmental conservation laws and the two below, Article twenty-four and Article eleven. Our records indicate that no application for any proposed regulated activity has been received by this office.
So how, how can that be? I mean, if there are no application, when do they apply for an application?
Well, there's two issues here. So one is the freshwater wetlands.
Right.
And if they are beyond the freshwater wetlands jurisdiction, which was a hundred feet of wetlands identified, they would be outside the jurisdiction of the D E C. That's one issue. Second issue is the endangered species act. And that is, I think the applicant needs to speak to it. During the E I S review, it was identified that there's long-eared bats in this, along Island, in this area. So that was what was addressed in the E I S, but never identified on this property or in this immediate facility. But again, we'll have the applicant address.
But didn't the conservation board, when you get to their comments, indicate that there was some clearing within the wetlands, within the jurisdiction?
Not the wetlands. They indicated that there's possibly some clearing within the two hundred foot jurisdiction.
Right.
But they need more information on the wetlands line. And that's another point that the applicant needs to address, and that the wetlands line needs to be updated to be accurate.
Right. When was it flagged?
It was recently updated and reflagged, but Ted stopped to a certain point.
So June fourth, two thousand nineteen?
You see, the wetland flag kind of goes here, but it actually goes up here. This is the plan that was submitted for completeness, but there's going to be an updated plan that reflects older plans, show that there was a wetland line here. And it just, they picked up the flags that Marty had gone to, which ended at this point at last.
Okay.
So they'll speak to that. Do you want to speak, should I go into the conservation or have other questions?
That was mine.
Who wants to address the D E C stuff?
Yeah, mine as well.
It's easier.
Yeah, it's easier than
It's freshening.
Yeah.
Well, it's freshening on my mind.
David Wardman's here, who, you know, prepared the F B I S, his firm. But as far as the freshwater wetlands act, interestingly, the D E C had issued a letter of non-jurisdiction for this project prior to this. And they recognized that there's no activities within one hundred feet. This new letter says in the vicinity of, doesn't say anything. And in fact, further conversations with the D E C, they acknowledged there's no, nothing happening, no activity occurring within one hundred feet. And likely, again, reissuing the letter of non-jurisdiction.
Wish, can you just point out your hundred foot line on this map?
Well, the first question is, is the wetlands. Okay. Wetlands are here, and here's a hundred feet down here. And then it comes over, and
You can come around.
The issue
Just come in front.
The issue of the wetlands, that the conservation board, might as well address the first two issues, was this particular site plan and the survey. So when we first submitted the plan, you know, there was a wetland flagging by Marty, and when we submitted the site plan application, this board said we wanted updated line. Took Marty two months to get out there. He got out there in June, he flagged it, there were thirty-nine flags. And the survey, interestingly, Marty didn't flag the complete line that he did previously.
He didn't come all the way down?
No, he went like this, and then the line continued like this, but he only stopped here. So the surveyor only showed what he flagged. So he didn't show that. And that was on, and that's not on the survey.
This is a nice map.
So
You can't have it.
The site plan, interestingly, and Jeff is here, he happened to put this box that would be where the health department would stamp the plan, in the spot where the wetland line did continue. And so it's not shown, that's what the conservation board is talking about. So among the site plan changes, this is, you know, a draft.
Can you turn it around, someone?
This is to the north. That's the same
It's giving you the same orientation.
All right.
So this is our draft that we're talking about, providing you with further information. We took that box out of there. We now continue the wetland line, which, by the way, there's a house here, there's a house here, there's a wetland line. The problem was Marty stopped right here, the new line. And you can see, this other line was his previous line. So we've shown both lines.
Okay.
The two thousand eleven line, and the two thousand nineteen line that stopped here. And then we've also shown the two hundred foot jurisdiction line from both wetland lines, and that's what those dotted lines are. And you can see, here's the hundred feet down here from these wetlands, and this is one hundred foot, or two hundred foot boundary from these, from Marty's current line, and from his old line, this is two hundred feet. You can see, all our activities are well beyond two hundred feet. So the other point of the conservation board, if you're looking at their comments, there's always been an area here, which has been sort of a maintenance area, there's sheds and so on, you'll see on our plan, we're removing those and so on. There's always been activity in here. There's been no clearing of the trees, the trees are all there, but there was always, there wasn't, if you've been out there, there's not a lot of understory. So there's always been activities taking place in there. And I believe this is what they're talking about. So to the extent that there is any disturbance that is within, and we've always told you that we maintain a hundred feet over here, non-disturbed. So to the extent all this is being removed, and we were revegetating in that area anyway. So all that will be addressed.
I'm just trying to compare that to what I'm looking at here. And I'm seeing the existing tennis courts over here.
Existing tennis courts are down here, on the south end of the property.
Okay, so it's, we're looking at, not looking at it from the same perspective?
That's it. We're looking at this orientation, not that one.
Yeah, but I
Yes.
We're looking at a different orientation.
That's what Claire always does, that's what she has. I just put it in the same
Can you just turn it around for us?
Which way?
So it's the same as this?
It's like you're looking at it, like
Like if
So
Horizontal.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah. Okay. What is this blue area?
For further discussion, we'll get to that. It's at the end of the report.
What about the dark gray?
That's in the conservation board report. We want to continue down, and you know, the first couple of questions are about these lines.
Okay, the site plan document needs to be revised to be updated, limit of clearing and clearing calculation.
Going back to D E C, let's just, staying at the D E C right now. Yeah, let's just finish what he, so you've delineated where our wetlands are.
D E C has jurisdiction only the first one hundred feet.
Right, and they're giving you a letter of non-jurisdiction?
They gave us one before, and they've told us verbally that
We'll get another one.
You'll get another.
Okay.
Because there's no activity within a hundred feet.
Just want to check these off. And now the endangered species act?
Endangered species, David can answer that, has to do with the long
Long-eared bats.
Which is an ongoing study for the D E C. And so as they come up with new information, they relay that along. Please.
Thank you. For the record, David Wardman from V H P for the applicant. As Wayne explained, and first even as Ms. Shay mentioned, the D E I S did evaluate potential ecological impacts, including impacts on endangered species, and does discuss the northern long-eared bat, which is a one such species. When the D E I S was prepared, we surveyed the property, we coordinated with the state's natural heritage program, which maintains records of these sorts of things, and we addressed every one of the records that was highlighted at the time. And what struck us first about the D E C's correspondence, you know, in response to the site plan referral, was the business about the freshwater wetlands act, because of course, we had corresponded to them, they had made a determination in the past. And the fact that Article eleven, endangered species act, was also mentioned, we thought maybe that was something similar. But rather than assume, we contacted Michelle Gibbons, who is the regional wildlife manager for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, D E C. She confirmed that every summer, the D E C is performing surveys throughout Long Island to identify where the bat has summer occurrences, not where they hibernate for the winter. And they have different management guidelines related to where there's a summer occurrence of that. They confirmed that within one point five miles of this property was a summer occurrence. And what that means is that it can be expected that the northern long-eared bat might roost in almost any tree in this whole vicinity, between the dates of April first and October thirty-first. And with respect to managing potential impacts to that sort of species, if you are to remove any trees at all, you're free to do so outside of that summer roosting period, from April first to October thirty-first. And the applicant does not intend to conduct any clearing during that time. That's not to say that they could not conduct that clearing, but were they to want to do so, they would have to go back to the D E C, further coordinate to determine whether there are any bats present at this property. But at this time, they're only notifying that somewhere within a one point five mile radius of our site was documented a summer occurrence.
So have you submitted documentation to that effect to us?
As, in a similar vein as with the modified site plan?
You're waiting for everything?
We're going to submit a comprehensive package that addresses item by item through all of these comments.
Okay. When does that happen? February thirteenth, so we have two days to read it?
We're going to do it next week.
Next week. Well, that's not a mapping item, right?
Correct. It's simply an explanation.
Right, it's an overall, it's an overall look at this.
So November through March, if you wanted to remove a tree or two, you could do it
Absolutely.
Consistent with your study of whether or not they're there?
That still go back to particular, do they go back to zones, or do they go back to trees to go back to flying nests?
Relatively ubiquitous. And what they go back to is their hibernacula, which is where they spend their winters. And there are different management considerations for that. There are, to my knowledge, none on Long Island at all. And they help themselves, anywhere you might find a mosquito, you might find one of these bats. And any snag in a tree might be a suitable place for them to do this roosting behavior, and that's why, you know, the clearing of any potential roost trees is restricted during that summer period.
Interesting. Okay. So number four for the, from the conservation, they say that clearing occurred less than two hundred feet from the wetlands to the west, as scaled from previous iterations.
That was the area I explained here.
That small area, so
See, they, not knowing where the wetland lines are, presuming it's within proximity of two hundred feet, but we believe it's not. But whatever has occurred in the past, you know, this particular plan doesn't show all the site plan elements, but the sheds and everything else that were there, that are being removed as our plan, and that area is going to be restored.
Revegetated?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what they're asking.
So, but one of the things, if we go further
Yes, number six? Well, page three on the site plan documents need to revise to depict area proposed land bank parking stalls and associated clearing calculations. So they're looking at clearing here. So the parking?
Yeah, and as you know, that's not in the Act of Fair Protection of the Land. But what we were, our premise along at the beginning was, is trying to keep everything in the disturbed areas and so on. But it was this board, among other things, that, wait a minute, we want you to relocate structures and put them in other places. All that was evaluated through the F B I S, and how much clearing and everything else. The intent is to minimize that. So conservation board, though, is just taking a position that there shouldn't be any extra clearing anywhere on the property. And then that seems to be a broad theme through their And our original plans before you didn't include, because we weren't doing anything where the 15% slopes were. However, when the board, in your finding statement, questioned that we relocate this, we relocated, but it wasn't for your finding statement purpose, we didn't have a detailed engineered site plan yet. And so, that you received with your site plan. And when you look at that sports court, this is what you have before you, right there, they realized that the westerly portion of it is in an area of 15% slope. So, we sent Jeff to the drawing board. He came back, and as conservation board recommended, rather than the court being in this location, encroaching in, we first went out and identified the 15% slopes, that's the shade area. Second was, they recommended we shifted north and east, which is also coming towards that area that's already the maintenance area disturbed area. So, it's in a way, reducing clearing down in this area and any encroachment on the 15%.
So, that was a good recommendation on the part.
Yes, and it's something we could achieve, and we'd be able to show you that that's been achieved.
So, that takes care. That's number eight, seven, or eight? That's number eight. Correct?
Yep. Okay, and they talk about shifting the court to, well, you did, that's what we're talking about.
Eight, nine.
And then, the parking stalls, proposed land bank. And Houston recommends the site plan to revise to provide the required land bank stalls along the existing driveway near cottages seven and eight. Cottages seven and eight are where, Wayne?
You've got to look at the plan, neither of these two plans have the land bank on it.
No, we don't have land banking.
That's one of the plans. You can do that, as you know, but the land banking is, again, because of the whole busing thing, or this, or otherwise, the parking isn't needed. And under your provisions, we showed in an area, and they, of course, would assume that that would eventually be improved, and they were trying to relocate it from wherever, I think we were proposing in this area, and they want us to go to seven and eight.
Seven on the right.
Cottage seven, eight, in order to allow for relocation of the proposed sports court as recommended online. The recommended project preserves a large block of woodlands between the camp and the residences on the west.
So, what they want us to do is go back to the north here in that area, and we'll get to the discussion, but that, this blue area is 100-foot setback. And as you know, we're trying to revegetate in that area, and so they're suggesting we put it in that area.
And you think that might be a better area?
We don't. We don't think we're ever going to need it. But if that's what you want us to show on paper, we can do that. That's what the whole part of the land bank is.
But typically, most land banked projections have a specified area, so I think that's what they're looking for.
Where do you do your overflow parking now?
So, here's one of the plans that show that.
That semicircle?
Yeah. This area, and they're saying...
And that's just a grass area? That's a grass area now?
This was pretty much disturbed areas, and they want us to go over here, disturbed areas, and also go into the areas that are closer to the north property.
Well, you only need 28 spaces, so it may not, it may not go.
It's this, it's the 28 spaces. It's that kind of...
So, you could split it, you know? You could always split it.
We'd probably take up the whole range across the furniture.
But you could take half of it.
Why would we want to increase activity on this northern border where we're getting all the feedback of, you know, disturbance, and now you, we want encouraged cars to start parking there? Headlights, I'd much prefer it in the top, away from the residences.
And that's just grass, right?
We're not going to even disturb it.
Yeah.
If it's not disturbed, you know, it's only there in the event, and I think frankly, you know, some of the conditions with busing and everything, our activity, if our camp isn't operating with busing, you've got a whole new plan, another review of Z E B A planning board or otherwise.
I prefer where you have it. Okay. Thanks for the, so, did we do that?
That's 10.
Yeah, and then, and then the elimination of use of fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides. Totally. Here's number 13.
They say that. I just want to go back to 12.
Yeah.
They're recommending 100-foot non-disturbances in the form of covenants. So, I speak to covenant, so if you want to make more comment.
And when you say extending, can you just show me where that, that is? Where are the conservation easements?
It's the 100-foot buffer down here. And it's actually not going to be over here. This is the 200-foot line.
Oh, okay. So, which is stronger, covenant?
I think it would be awkward to put an easement on in clear frame. I think a covenant is stronger.
Covenant is stronger.
An easement is stronger. Does it sound important?
Okay. Whatever's stronger.
You mean just to relieve it?
Yeah. But it doesn't matter.
Okay, it doesn't matter to them, so I will leave it to council.
I don't say any forcibility.
Typically, for something like this, you would use a C N R as opposed to easement. These would usually grant you like a right of, right, you know, some type of use.
So, covenant restriction, right?
Yeah.
So, it's covenant versus conservation, easement. I'm asking which is a stronger, and Claire?
You can ask the, or the attorney. I think it's stronger, the present.
If you want to put a conservation, specifically on that described property.
Yes, on that particular...
Can we make a determination, since council doesn't seem to have, the applicant doesn't have, perhaps you can take a look and see to address our needs, which is to give the strongest...
Right.
Protection for the environment. And since he doesn't seem to care, I guess you can take the time to research it. What do you think?
It's good.
Essentially, they say the same thing.
Yeah, I know. It's the enforceability.
The underlying issue is why do you put a covenant or an easement on it in the first place? Because the statute says you can't take an activity within 100 feet without a covenant, and it's required, the code, and the D E C requires. So, in this case, it's so far removed from our property. Either one you want to do, but to me, we're going to be doing covenants because of other conditions you're recommending, we're going to be doing a set of covenants anyway. And as far as enforceability, if there's a violation, and you're going to go after us on a violation of the code, you're not going to try to seek enforcement. So, it's really a notice for...
I was just going to say, it's a notice, I'm looking at it as a notice situation. I agree with you, Wayne, I'm looking at it as a notice situation for later on. Anything's going to happen.
Either way, gets filed against the property, so...
One is no less stronger or enforceable than the other.
That's why I was leaving it up to the town, our town attorney to determine which is better, but I see it as a notice factor for later on action.
For C N R, you could probably use the language I hear, like 100-foot setback from the pond, an easement, you probably want to, you probably have to have a described property of this, of this, you know, the specific property that you're going to place the conservation easement on.
That might be good, true. Well, to be determined.
Changes though.
To be determined, by councils. And then, the 13 is pesticides, fertilizers, herbicides.
I think we have a problem with that. It's well beyond wetland jurisdiction, and the F E I S doesn't justify that. There's nothing, they're relying on the F E I S.
You're a neighbor to Little Fresh Pond, that's why.
That's the issue.
That's the issue. It goes into the pond. Well, that's what you say. That was always the issue in the finding statement.
And I just have to state, state for the record, that this board is bound by the finding statement.
Well, there's new information. Dr. Gobler is saying that the water flow is, goes into the pond. There are several other scientific reviews that say that it does. In addition to which, Gobler, who's working now on the Lake Agawam project, made a very clear statement that it's not nitrogen so much as it is phosphorus that creates the algal blooms, and phosphorus is caused by wastewater.
And fertilizer.
Yeah, and fertilizer. So, that is a reason why, no fertilizer.
And I would argue that could be a selling point for the camp, that we're environmentally green, and that's, that is a value to a lot of people.
How are you going to enforce it?
You may be environmentally brown. If you're not going to be able to use any fertilizers or any kind of treatments whatsoever, I think, I think there probably are, as we've seen in other applications that are recently before us, ways to do this that are environmentally sound. But to say you can't use any, I think that's a little too restrictive.
I think that the town is trying to work toward that end, is it not, Gloria, in terms of sustainability and a green footprint?
Absolutely.
Particularly here.
I mean, the town, the town is not using any, any chemical, any fertilizers on any of their parkland properties as walking the walk, rather than just telling people you shouldn't do things. So, it's, you know, it's unfortunately where we all need to go.
So, I'm not going to...
You can put the comment in.
Yeah. C A C had no response. The A R B talked about the doors, the further damage, and have a certain condition. Landmarks had no concerns or comments with respect to the property. Southend Con Heskey's received a letter, the plan received a letter yesterday. As representatives of the 52,000 owners of Little Fresh Pond, the board of trustees wished to add further comments regarding the application of the Hampton Day Camp. We are well aware of the numerous expert studies submitted involving groundwater transport and the methods the pond has fed. We must, however, not overlook this one essential fact. Sixty years ago, while performing the annual fish restocking of the pond, we observed a clear body of water. In the four, few short years, there has been a drastic change in the health of the pond with no appreciable increase in use of the existing housing units surrounding the water body. We urge the planning board to approve the site plan that strictly minimizes the impacts on the pond by mandating advanced wastewater treatment and runoff protection, as well as requiring more monitoring wells and delineating consequences at testing reveals increased levels of nitrogen and other dangerous substances in order to prevent further degradation of the pond.
Great. So, you've included that, Claire, in the report, right?
That is in the report.
Yeah, thank you.
So, are you ready with the site plan standards? Do you want to go through them?
Sure.
So, traffic access. A I site within code states, this was totally valid with the D E I S and F E I S. So, otherwise, a full environmental review in the form of D E I S, F E I S, finding statements, and such. Southend Con Highway Department, Town Engineer has final design review for relocating access ways, and they're showing them. Response is the number of access ways, there are three existing, two are to be relocated to improve site capability. The two to the north will serve the camp, and the southern access way will serve employees and tennis club patrons. Standard bet. Link to the access ways. All three access ways shall be way to 20 feet. The northernmost access way shall be entrance only. Entrance, the center access way shall be exit only. The southernmost access way shall be two-way, according to standard bet. Grade of access ways, the grades of each access way are indicated on the site plan, the standard bet. Alignment of access ways, the following is detailed in the D I S and by the statement. I think I repeated that. Access ways relationship to intersection, the existing of proposed access ways are within more than 700 feet in this intersection. Access ways relationship to pedestrian crossings, there are no pedestrian crossings of the existing of proposed access ways, standard bet. Access ways relationship to places of public assembly, there are no places of public assembly of the existing proposed access ways, standard bet. Any questions?
Well, there was some conversation about requiring some flashing signals here.
Actually, I do know that, yes. So, it was a public comment, too, and so that would be something that we could have the applicants investigate with the highway department, possibly, you know, blind intersection, you know, curb coming up, active, active driveways, and the flashing lights could be operational in the summer or...
Or operational during, during the camp days, just as schools, schools are.
Yeah.
So, that, to alert drivers then.
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
To take extra caution, okay.
Okay.
So, we put it here, all right?
I mean, there were a lot of comments about site distance and turning with buses. Can we make sure that we cover that in here? Because I'm not sure, when I read it, that, that I understood.
Okay. I'll look at the D E I S, F E I S, and put some more, which includes the buses' site distances. Anything else? Interior circulation and parking. So, here is for the parking and the confusion of the golf course versus...
What they based it on?
The tennis court. This is in the D E I S. So, they computed that, based upon that calculation of three parking spaces per hole, or seven courts, which generates on 90...
Is it seven courts or 10 courts?
I think it's seven.
How many courts are there, Wayne?
It was 10. We reduced the number, and ultimately, there will be two. One was already reduced, so we're down to nine now, and two will be removed, and actually, one is being modified to the full sports court.
So, we count...
That's the one on the...
So, we count a sports court, so it's eight or nine? I just need a number.
Well, the code defines them all as sports courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, whatever.
Right.
So, these, there's seven here, and this is the new sports court.
Eight.
That's taking place. So, there was one here, two here, and seven here. That was the 10.
So, seven, eight, nine, 10.
There was one here, one here, and there's nine existing now. And these two are being basically relocated in this area.
So, it's nine, not seven, Claire?
Okay.
Right? It's nine courts.
Physical would be seven tennis courts and one large sports court.
But they're courts.
So, is that eight?
And actually, it's twenty.
I thought you said there were two sports courts, sports courts, up there.
Yes, currently.
Yes, and...
And that's being removed, and then, there's just this one large.
So, that one large and the seven on the side there is eight. I count nine, you'll have to recount, but whatever it is, you multiply it by whatever they use.
Yeah, multiply by three, and that's where the 21 came in.
So, it's going to be more than that.
So, that would be 28.
Three's a 27.
Is it 24 or 28? Depending on...
27. Every sports court has to be counted, if that's how they're calculating.
Wayne, that's seven and one?
We'll have to, you know, we'll sit with the staff and just figure that out, because all that would, this would do is generate, if there was any, generate another land bank parking spot.
So, we're talking...
As necessary, we'll, we'll figure out exactly how many courts would need parking.
Because I think the courts speak to tennis club, correct?
Correct.
Will the tennis club patrons be using the sports court?
No.
So, the 90 camp counselors is what is the camp, which is where the sports court is happening. That's the difference. So, those are the two, the two...
So, that one large and the seven on the side there is eight. I count nine. You'll have to recount. But whatever it is, you multiply it by whatever they use.
Yeah, multiply by three, and that's where the 21 came in.
So, it's going to be more than that.
So, that would be 28.
Three's a 27.
Is it 24 or 28? Depending on...
27. Every sports court has to be counted, if that's how they're calculating.
Wayne, that's seven and one?
We'll have to, you know, we'll sit with the staff and just figure that out.
Okay.
Because all that would, this would do is generate, if there was a need, generate another land bank parking spot.
So, we're talking...
It's necessary. We'll figure out exactly how many courts would need parking.
Because I think the courts speak to tennis club, correct?
Correct.
Will the tennis club patrons be using the sports court?
No.
So, the 90 camp counselors is what is the camp, which is where the sports court is happening. That's the difference. So, those are the two uses. The seven tennis, the seven tennis courts is one use, and then the camp is the other, which is the 90 counselors, the potential for 90 counselors to be on the property.
Still, hold on, you...
But it's all one thing.
But just like one...
I mean, yes, there'll be land bank, but I just think we should have a proper calculation, that's all. And I think that there are more courts here than seven.
Okay. So, eight, then it'd be 20, then it'd be three more. It would be three more.
I count nine courts times three, because I get 27. But you can figure it out.
But then, yes, if it's nine, then it's 27. So, we'll get a number on that. Okay, we'll work on that. And then the interior circulation, I speak to, that they're providing cross rocks for circulation. There's gates. We just want some information on when the gates will be closed. And then access shall be permitted for emergency vehicles.
What was the thinking about the two-way, the lower entrance being two-way?
This is for, it's my understanding, this is for the tennis club and then any place. This would not be where the kids are dropped off or anything like that. And that's why it's two-way.
It's probably two-way access.
And the other is a horseshoe, essentially, one way in, one way out.
Claire, at the bottom of point one, you've got an enrollment of blank campers verified on a blank basis.
Right. Well, 420 is the max. Their average just has to be 390.
Well, don't we need to have...
I'm sure.
Don't we need to have numbers in there, is my point.
I used to, I used to, I used to read these numbers, but I can't remember right now. But the maximum is, I'm going to, 420, the average is 390, and 360. Sorry, 360, I'm running a dollar now. 360, 420.
My point is we...
Right in the finding statements.
Yeah, we need, I, don't we need to have those defined in this point? That's all I...
Absolutely. It's in the finding statements, so I'm just going to copy that right over. Yes. So, my point to that blankness is the verification.
Yes.
That was something you left, the planning board, when they adopted the finding statement, left open, that they wanted a type of verification.
Right.
This is now, when the planning board, when they make the decision on the project, they will tighten that up. What type of verification do you want? This is the time to talk about it.
Okay. You discuss it somewhere else?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait and talk about 17 and 18? Get some other things in?
Um...
This is really about parking.
Yes, sir.
So, we want to talk, we'll talk about it later. I have this question also. Claire, go on to...
Can we open the door, please?
All right, can we just...
Oh, nobody's yet, sir.
All right, so, this number one...
Just tell them to be down the hallway if they want to.
Again, I'm just trying to have one document that has artifacts on it, so excuse me for going back. A maximum of 25 buses shall be utilized, as well as 90 camp counselors, which is...
A maximum.
Right, that's what I was looking at from there, from the finding statement. And then I had on, with an average enrollment of 360, with an estimated number of campers upwards to 480. Then the DE, that was what the finding statement had, but the DEIS had a maximum of 360 campers and 90. This is what I had brought up.
That's the discrepancy.
That was the discrepancy that I had brought up back then. There was a discrepancy between the DEIS and the FEIS. And I still have not gotten that straightened out for me. I believe the DEIS states that camper enrollment was a maximum of 360 campers and 90 staff.
The finding statement will pass.
Excuse me?
Finding statement passed.
That's what you voted on.
Yeah, thank you.
Draft DEIS, FEIS, what we've said would be an average of 360.
Correct.
The maximum became the topic of discussion, and we had, what was it, 480 or 480? There was some higher number.
480.
And it was this board's decision in the finding statement to lower it to a maximum of 420 with an average of 360.
That's a 60, 60-count differential between 360 and 420. How did we ever come up with that number?
It just came up.
I mean, you had a, you had a letter submitted by Elkoits that went on and on about secret...
There's a complete analysis on the draft and final DEIS, and the enrollment, and how it fluctuates week to week, and how the average is obtained, and the maximum, in which case this board lowered the maximum.
Well, I still think it's...
As of now, there's no maximum, is that correct?
There's a fluid number. Do I have the maximum?
Today? What's the maximum today? 400, 500, 800, 1200? No maximum, right? Just want to get my head around that one. Well, the Health Department's...
And the Health Department doesn't have a number.
Something to say about that.
I'm having a problem with everybody's heads.
And the parking, frankly, this section is about parking, is based on the maximum use of this property, with the 420 with 90 and whatever the parking calculation is. So, the discussion about verification and everything else is later in your staff report. But I think for this purpose, it's reflecting, make sure the parking reflects whatever the maximum is allowed.
So, you're saying there's no maximum, Dennis?
There is no maximum.
Oh.
Existing.
Yeah, because they're functioning without...
Existing today.
Permit, basically.
They're functioning without a permit.
Prior to this...
Okay, but the finding statement...
Right.
Sets a maximum.
Sets a maximum.
But as of right now, there is no maximum.
Yeah.
That is one of the key elements of the review.
This is, I hate belaboring this point. It's just that I know that the FEIS was submitted, the DEIS is submitted by the applicant, and there was a statement in there for a maximum of 360 campers and 90 staff, to an average of 360 campers and 90 staff. Then somehow, when we got to the finding statement, Dennis?
Yeah.
There was...
It went up to 420.
So, is that where we're at for the finding statement?
Yes.
I mean, you had Elkoits submit a letter that went on and on about the fact that we didn't have a right to limit it, that we couldn't justify a cap.
So, where are we right now? Where at? Is it the applicant's 420?
Max, 420, average, 360.
Average, 360.
And let's have some kind of rationale behind that. Do we have it? Is there a rationale in the finding statement?
Yes.
For this section, though, your parking requirement is always based on the worst-case scenario, the maximum.
Which would be the 420.
Yes.
Okay. But then, of course, that allows the enrollment in the camp to be done as well, right?
And as the finding statement allow.
Finding statement, right. And the verification, is that where we're at right now, determining verification or...
I think it's something we should discuss, yes.
In this section or in another section?
Either way, of certain sections.
Where are you?
I'm still in parking one. I don't think verification is necessary in the parking statement.
Yeah, I agree. Not in the parking.
I don't, the determination of when the verification is done, I don't think is appropriate in the parking section. Wayne, you said there was another section we're looking at?
It starts on the bottom of page 17.
So, I shouldn't put anything about the campers here?
No, no, I would say you put the campers, but the verification, I think, should be something that's discussed somewheres else.
Okay, I'm going to say enrollment campers, period.
Yeah.
And put the verification elsewhere.
Right. Just to be logical. So, we don't have a discussion now, because this is really trying to determine parking. Just, okay?
Yeah. Last, moving on to landscaping and screening?
Yes. C is regarding landscaping and screening. The first point is that there's going to be some additional little parking adjacent to the new cottage number 14, and there should be some screening in that area. There is vegetation in that area, but it's not, there's no screening.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
There's just one? Just one in there?
Proposed cottage.
And that's a camper cottage? Is that a, what's the use of that cottage?
Have to be for staff.
With a staff?
All these will be for staff.
Got 10 people in there.
And that's being relocated. So, what Claire is suggesting is there is existing vegetation along there, but she's suggesting some other vegetation. And we've asked, with respect to all of these, we've asked our landscape architect to look at the recommendations, come back, and actually, perhaps meet with staff and talk about something. Because as you go down, for example, Claire, you go down to something, evergreen plantings along the center parking lot. So, this is all wooded here, and you're looking for a row of evergreen plantings along this area, and the question is whether it'll survive, given the vegetation. And so, I'd rather have the landscape architect sit with you and figure out, you know, I understand what you're trying to achieve, and let's make sure whatever we put in there will survive.
What about low hedge? Just to...
That may work.
Yeah.
But I'm not the expert. I'd rather have them talk directly to Claire and figure out. But the goal was, I think, is to the extent there is any visibility, that you're blocking any parked cars that are there. They're parked there now, so I don't know if you can see anything. Nothing happened during winter, so it's, you know, off, but, you know, we'll sit down and figure out what will survive there, because I don't think just planting those evergreens will work.
Does Claire, sound attenuation come in with landscaping? Is that a parallel adjunct to that?
Yes.
Because I'm going to propose that. Just want, you know, Wayne, I'm looking for some sound attenuation, some sound barriers, whether we call them banishnita, to take some sound testings along the residential area, because clearly, the trees are not doing it alone.
Yeah, we can see that.
Wayne, I think they're waiting on you.
No.
Oh.
No, is there a question?
Oh, yeah.
I think you go through each one of these. Existing evergreen plantings, we are obviously going to show there is evergreen plantings along the north property line. You know, the planting plan for the removal of the basketball court and the tennis court is something that has been submitted, but the question is, of course, whether it extends totally for 100 feet, which I think we're all in agreement it is. But here, it's saying planted, maybe grasses and sedges, but I think our planting plan is actually more substantial, shrubs and everything else. So, again, we want to make sure we're consistent. And then the planting along the center parking lot and the south parking lot, again, the question is where and what are you trying to achieve, screen from what, where, and imagine it's from a camp. But when you plant them, I mean, it's already existing vegetation, whether or not you're going to put them in, you're not going to survive, because it will destroy itself.
My concern, Wayne, is sound attenuation. So, if we want to have a conversation about that, we can, because something needs to be done. We just got a sound...
The question is where, from where to where.
Well, I'm not the sound expert, so there are panels that can be positioned. I think we need to get a sound expert, like banishnita, fencing with sounding material. There's lots of sophisticated material now that's being used. I think it's something we need to talk about.
Well, I think you're, you have a full DEIS and an evaluation of the experts through that. Just for example, we can talk about the north property line, always part of the...
That's the line.
Always, what was proposed, first of all, the identification of the existing courts and the activities.
Remove it.
And that, your recommendations to relocate all those, that and the activities...
That's right. To move it away.
Into the interior of the property.
That's what it's...
Thus, this area being totally revegetated to a point of 100 feet, and what this light blue area is the area of 100 feet. And so, the first thing you've got to recognize also is what was proposed is a six-foot stockade fence along the north property line. We recently recognized that extending that fence as it goes further west, as being west, makes no sense, because, again, this is...
That's great.
...a slope, and it's going down. And actually, the fence would go down in the sort of the gully, whereas this is higher, goes down, and then starts to come up where the other houses are. So, if you're going to do anything effectiveness, it would be to keep the fence to come on the top of the slope in the area where there's existing vegetation and long areas where, if you look at a landscape plan, this is all to be augmented with other plantings along that area.
Good. So, I'm just asking for part of that fencing, or sections of that fencing to be supplemented with some soundproofing material.
It's a stockade fence, I'm not sure.
No.
It can only be six feet.
Well, there are ways to do it. I'm not the sound expert, but we had banishnita in here on an application several years ago, and it solved it. She did sound testings and recommended remediation, and we did it, and it worked. And that is one of the major issues here.
Okay.
You're moving forward.
Great. DEIS to do with the master plan, they got a variance concerning Boulder Field, so I summarize that.
Where are you, I'm sorry?
D, middle of 14. The natural features, talk about the water body, we talked about this. The fertilizer chemicals, we'll talk more about that. Conservation, no activities related to the camp, shelter, little fresh pods, establish the covenants, the EC letter of non-jurisdiction, drainage course, wetlands, obviously, same issues, we've touched on this already. No marshes and dunes, woodland and large trees, we talked about that, clearing, unique plants and wildlife habits, tab, we talked about that, and no flood zone hazard area. Cultural features, landmarks, comments, payments, we show... New York lighting, we talked about this. This is pretty standard. Fixtures should be reduced to 3,000 Kelvin. Want to talk about the heights? They're recommending 12 feet, probably for fewer poles. Do you want to limit it to 10? That's typical residential. And any power, power and light should be brought into performance, effigets, they're going to match, drainage, town engineer.
Before you jump off the radio, we're okay with those conditions, changing it to 10. Our consultants have a little liberty to tell our clients what lighting they need. He doesn't believe we need all the lighting that is shown on the plan, and he's okay with it, so we'll go to the lower heights, so that's not a question.
Okay. And then I think the importance is the public utilities, the health departments and the IA system. So, as far as I'm aware, they are replacing, replacement systems, new systems with cottages and the new toilets with the pool area are being proposed as IA systems. So, the new ones are the applicant's...
How many do we have? How many septic systems are there on the property?
All the septic, as you know, were replaced four years ago. Yes, four years ago. So, all the septic systems were approved and replaced by the health department four years ago. Jeff can tell us how many. The health department requires, if you're going to alter or modify, so since we're relocating this cottage to this location, this is a relocation, they require a septic. When we first went to the health department, the health department was, you know, I don't know if I high priority area, they don't mandate IA systems. They were ready to approve a standard system, just as everything else is. We applied and told them, no, we need to put this new system as an IA system. They recently came back in the review and told us that modifications down in this area, because of the added pools, will require an upgrade of the system. We're going to do an IA system for the system that is here.
And how many other systems are there? Can you tell us?
There are a total of eight.
There are a total of eight. Jeff, I'll...
There are eight, including these, or eight more?
Eight total on the site.
Eight total, two...
So two are being upgraded.
You're proposing two for IA and six for regular?
No, the six are in, right?
Yeah, there's six.
All eight are in, right? Yeah. But the wind...
There's... There's a system where the two cabins are being removed, that system is being abandoned, that's one of the...
Can you define system? A septic system?
A sanitary system dedicated...
It's not, it's not, it's a cesspool? It's a traditional septic system, or it's an IA system?
It's a standard, approved sanitary system.
Okay, okay.
So there's no, there's no IAs on site. So those, one is being removed when these two cabins come out.
Brings it down to seven.
Brings it down to seven. There's a new cabin, 14 going in here, requires a new system, that will be an IA system. So that's back to eight systems. This system up here, which is, takes the flow from the clubhouse and cottage two, is being upgraded to an IA because of the additional patrons that will be in that area using the soil units. So those two systems are being upgraded to IA.
And the other six? Okay, so can I ask why there is no consideration to upgrade all the septics to IA, given what's going on with the water contamination, drinking water in Suffolk, and that the county is really pushing for IA systems wherever we have intense use?
There's no requirement with the county.
We understand that there's no requirement. I'm saying, why are you not considering it? I'm sorry, Gloria.
It was considered, and it was reviewed and addressed in the FEIS and the finding statement.
Right, the finding statement, the famous finding statement.
Which you must rely on.
Gloria, you were... Yeah, well, I, one of the reasons I voted no on that finding statement was because the grandfathered septic for those cottages, I believe, are overstated, because those cottages were used by families in the summer, not 10 people. And the application that went to the health department said 10 people per cottage.
Right, that's, I've addressed that process with you. So when we first started with the health department, they required us to go through the analysis of what the existing flow was at the site. The existing flow at the site, they have a guidance memorandum, guidance memorandum number 20, which is on their website. What you do is you submit the certificate of occupancies that are existing on the site at the time of the application, which at that time, we had, all these cottages had certificate of occupancies as cottages for transient housing. When you go to the health department, they have no identifier for a cottage when doing a multiplier per flow. It's people. So their only definition for people in a building, such as a boarding house, a convent, monastery, you name it, is a dormitory. It all, is a dormitory in there, and it's 75 gallons a day per person. Then we go to the building code. The building code gives us density for the unit that's there. We did a very detailed study for the health department that they verified, where we went through every square footage of every cabin, the CO allows it to be occupied as a cabin, which falls under that multiplier.
How many people?
I don't have the number off my...
It was listed as 10 on the document that I got from the town website.
So they reviewed that and established the grandfathered flow, NF since, with the recent conversations with them, asked us to go back and re-verify that and supply the data to them, and we did.
But you have a different animal now. I mean, now you've got 90 councilors, 400 kids...
It's still the same certificate of occupancy as of right now.
This is a decision by the health department.
I understand. I understand, but the data that was given to them is...
That's your opinion?
Is data...
Which is contrary to your findings and your finding statements.
Well, I didn't, I didn't vote for the finding statement, Wayne.
It's irrelevant. As I said, you must rely on the finding statement.
Well, unfortunately...
I'm sorry, can I ask them to be focused?
Yes, we are focused.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. I mean, if you want to ask them to submit that in writing, you know, to just explain it or summarize it nicely, or...
Send the FEIS to address that for you in any response.
Claire, I think my point is that based on, however, I believe that the septic flow is too high, and so I would say we should rely on what the county says about IA systems. We should rely on what the town of Southampton wants to say.
Yeah.
So that, that's where, that's where I was coming from. I don't want to go back and re-engineer that.
No, and I think that what you are asking for is the whole site to be IA right now.
Yes. Yes.
Didn't say it.
I agree. The whole site should be IA.
Things have changed.
My only point is you have to, you can't arbitrarily require a condition, it has to be based on something. What's in the record is the FEIS and your finding statement, which addressed the issue. If you're going to do something contrary, what's the new information that changes that?
The new information is the degradation of the pond in September.
That was addressed in the FEIS. The fact that the pond has been a degraded water body hasn't changed.
Yes, it has dramatically. Of course it has.
How?
It, in September, it had higher nitrogen levels...
Had an algae growth.
Than any pond in the state. And that's, that's why the trustees are saying, you know, the summers are warmer, things are changing. There's other science. I mean, the algal bloom that was detected in September is new information. Yeah. It didn't exist before. It didn't exist when this FEIS and finding statement was done.
And as far as I remember, from what Dr. Goldler said, or anyone else, there was no one who could pin that on the camp. I mean, I think it's a huge problem, but it's a problem that needs to be addressed globally. You can't go beyond, as Wayne says, the finding statement at this particular point in time. But yeah, we have to find a solution. But I don't think any one of us can say, we know exactly whose fault this is.
Well, Goldler, and I'm quoting him when he came to the public hearing, right? Watershed, watershed flow is from south to west. The camp is 350 feet from the pond. Flow of groundwater June to September, the water from the pond evaporates. It is replaced by groundwater flow in September. The groundwater flows southeast to northwest. Southeast is the side of the camp. He, you know, he's submitted further studies, Goldler, because he's very involved with the county, on these groundwater studies. And so, yes, I mean, we're losing our ponds. This pond is severely impacted.
Meanwhile, you have 200 homes in that groundwater area, literally flushing their effluent into that pond.
But there's been no increase in home building around that pond.
Jackie, you have to, this area, go back historically, how this area was developed. These houses were all what they call camps or cabins. Some of them didn't even have heat. They were built on locust poles, and they had maybe one bathroom. Take a tour around these neighborhoods. These houses are now exploding. They're going from three bedrooms to seven bedrooms. Each and every one of them is putting in a, an onsite laundry. Years ago, these, these houses didn't have washer, dryers. They didn't have six bathrooms, five bathrooms. And ironically, they're not doing teardowns there, because, hey, then we'd have to move back away from the pond and move into more conforming locations. So you have basically three or four studs held together by braces and a whole house exploding around it. And that's why the pond is degrading. And you can take, all I do, ask is that you take a tour out of the area and look at all the dumpsters and the tarps and the construction sites going on in that area. It's not rocket science.
We could ask the G.I.A. system to, to survey that information and have facts, not supposition.
Well, I can also say that I recall Dr. Goldler being asked that question directly as to whether or not he could attribute what was going on there now more, or strictly to the camp, and his response was, I don't know. I remember that. That question was asked.
Well, he's now talking about groundwater flow, so, into the pond, so I have different notes. I'm sorry. My concern is the environmental impact on Little Fresh Pond, the other water bodies here, but for such an intense use, where we have to in some way mitigate the impact of it.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's mandated IA systems.
Groundwater monitoring system that has to go in and, and kept up IA systems for the whole site. I mean, the, this is what our job is on the planning board. You know, we're to look after the environment, that is a requirement. It's not meant to be punitive here. It's meant to be a protection for the environment. And so I don't know what more I can say, except that. And so what we're asking for is not irrational, it's not out of line, it's not above and beyond what we need to ask for.
Do you know what the cost is? What's the cost? He just replaced all the systems four years ago. Every one of them, voluntarily. As is required here, no approvals whatsoever, he voluntarily went and replaced all the systems at this cost.
Well, I'm sure he had to with 400 kids there every day.
It was mandated. Now, four years, do you know what the cost is?
What's the cost of a dead pond? Can I, Wayne, can, there's six, can I just try to focus in on the facts? So we have two new units going in. Can you tell us the capabilities of the other six units? Because we have concerns. And the problem is that the science, I'm not saying I can go outside the FEIS, I understand what my regulations are, but what I'm trying to, I'm trying to ascertain the capabilities of the current systems, the other six units that are in there. You're saying they were all recent, they're new units?
All, every, all the...
I'm just trying to get some facts.
...are all new systems, replaced, what was there, the substandard, which weren't even systems, they were cesspools, no tanks. This is all upgraded four years ago. And remember, this is eight weeks of the year, temporary use. And the science, the fact that it doesn't flow to the pond.
I think it's...
So you add all that together, and now you add the reasonableness of the cost, if you're now talking about it, you don't even know what the cost of an IA system is.
About $20,000, is that right?
It's about $30,000 for a standard for residents, let alone the cost. None of which you get grants or otherwise for, for a commercial facility.
Is there any analysis that you can set forth to, for the planning board's purposes, that would tell the differential between an IA system or what you just put in?
We could do that for you. We could provide that for you. And I can go back to my client, and they are at least willing to consider certain things within reason, but there's an extreme cost of just going in and replacing something that was just replaced four years ago for this temporary season.
What I'm trying to ascertain is what do we have right now? What, what it does, what an IA system, if it was proposed, if it was put in there, what would it improve even greater than what you currently have in? Is there any adjustments that can be made to the six systems that you have that would improve them? Can we look at this issue again without just being, saying no? Septic systems don't take nitrogen out, it just, where the IA system does. Septic system just filters the water.
But I have a technical question. If these new systems that we're putting in four years ago, and the two new systems that are going in have tanks, don't those tanks get pumped? No?
No.
They just sit there?
Yeah, what, what they put in...
And so what goes into the pond? Nothing. Nothing? Right?
No, that's not true.
That's not what Gloria is speaking of.
It basically, it's going, it's, it's just being filtered through these big concrete rings. It's, the IA systems use ways to get the nitrogen out of that, which, what, what, the new stuff they put in is the same thing you have in your house right now, which is a, which is a septic system.
A septic with a leaching field or a leaching pool and...
Yes, that's all, that's all they put in.
The nitrogen is there.
And they cost $5,000, $6,000. I'm done trying to...
We'll go back and try to get information, because it's available and it's there, and David just said he can get us, get you some information.
And perhaps there's something we can do that's cost effective somewhat.
You know, I have to say, these are new issues that are being discussed...
Excuse me, Mr. Bregman.
The new issues...
Can I comment?
Need to be heard on behalf of this...
You can't, you can't, I'm sorry. We have your documentation, we have your letters. I happen to think that the algal bloom on Little Fresh Pond in September, being the worst in the county, is, is new information. Which could open secret. But I do think that some site plan conditions would have to be imposed, groundwater monitoring, for sure.
Yeah, good timing. Let's move on.
Do, so we just go on?
Yeah.
And I'm going to summarize this.
I mean, that's what we're here for, to comment on this.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what we're commenting on.
Yes, absolutely. So L is the public address system, and it'll be prohibited.
Right. But of course, there are blaring voices. Maybe you can attach some sound, some comments about sound attenuation here, too.
Put muzzles on the children.
No, muzzle on the councilors. Did you listen to that latest recording?
Well, muzzles.
Oh, I was supposed to ask you for the muzzles.
That's, that's not what I'm saying.
I didn't...
The councilors, too.
Okay. I don't think that adds anything or shows anything to the public if we, you know, minimize each other's comments for comments that we're getting. So let's, please, let's keep it simple.
No, you sound like the chief justice.
Yeah. And that's a good thing to sound like.
That's a good thing to sound like. So physically challenged access to the HOP5, the ADA standards, energy conservation information.
Does that, does anything, because it's a tennis camp as well, when the summer camp closes, it's been a tennis camp, I guess for adults, I'm not quite sure of the use. All ages. So is there, there is any handicap compliance?
All, all handicap.
Yeah, all right.
And then cross-access, there's no opportunity here.
Well, then you've got the use issue, right?
Yes, so with no...
So that was the question of the analysis of the 360.
Yeah, so this is, this is basically, I'm just going to summarize it, their use was granted by zoning board appeals and not the code. The code, if you're doing a new day camp, would have hundred-foot backs from the property lines. Because of the buildings, especially on the north side, you would not be able to use the step backs anyways. But I am encouraging, A, the designation of all the uses on the property, so you have a site plan that people can refer to very clearly, so where the, where the activity's going to be, all the sports courts, everything outlined. And also, where you're removing the courts to the north side, I'd recommend something like a fence or some kind of clear vegetation, something that says there's no activities on the other side of that. So I'd recommend a split grass fence, it could be vegetation, it could be, you could shake the whole area, that's also a problem. I would recommend that along the whole north side.
So not to be used, in other words, does that address the issue of these grass areas that are being used for activity?
Yeah, it's a combination. But I'm just going to point out again, these are two sports courts that are being relocated. There'll be a fence, obviously, here, which is great, but at that 100-foot line, which I think that's what he's showing in this blue...
The blue.
Especially here, you'd probably want to put a fence. And I don't know if there's any activity going out here.
Well, that's what we have to...
But again, there, these are the...
Are there existing structures on that?
Right, they would remain, those are cottages that are being used at night, I don't think that's going to be a problem. But I'm just saying, like, outdoor activity, just stay on that one side. But I'm just saying, like, outdoor activity, just stay on that one side. That's my suggestion, because it's based on a planning standard. They came up with 100 feet from some place for days.
Sure.
So, obviously not required by code, but here's a standard that you could hang your site plan.
And what about overnight? Does that come under here? Our code, is that here?
They were granted ability for people to stay overnight, I think it was 65 persons, I might have mistaken again.
That was in the CBA decision?
Yes.
That's what it says.
But now there's 90.
Now there's 90.
90 would be councilors altogether, some of them would not stay overnight.
65 overnight.
And then the typical signage dumpsters.
Okay, so let's, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to finish my ideas of-
I, no, 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 because I think this is where you wanted to do the-
Definitely want to do the verification.
The verification, didn't you want to do it in there?
Yeah.
What? Yeah, that's why I just stopped you, I didn't need to interrupt you. But I thought that's where you wanted to do the verification.
Yes, let's do the verification. So, what I say, in the middle of the use, we'll talk about the number, maximum here, it's very clear what they are. So, I'm suggesting that there be a covenant that describes what the verification shall be, and then there should be some kind of letter statement, here's the enrollment for this year. When do you want that? I think it's something you want to verify during, during the year, but maybe you want on September 15th to say, this is what happened at our camp, and that would be clear. I spoke to the applicant about this, they said the health department has some kind of standard like this anyway. Somebody is double-checking the number of kids at these camps on the health department level, so maybe there is something we could do that mirrors them.
What did you do?
Do we want an enrollment schedule, or do we want an attendance schedule?
I was thinking both.
Because sometimes people enroll and they know their intent.
Sure. Yeah, either way, I'm just, you wanted something, I'm just trying to throw something out there.
Some measurement.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking exactly what Dennis said. The initial enrollment, and then once the camp is done for the season, here's where we-
So, book.
Yeah.
I mean, and the, the camp owner knows what the enrollment is, I mean, that's a business model. He's a little extra number of kids and-
When does the Board of Health do it?
So, this is an interesting issue. So, I appreciate the Board trying to figure out what the purpose is, because that's important. The Board of Health requires for operation purposes that you apply at the beginning of the season, and you tell them what your maximum of enrollment is. And then periodically, they come out, they inspect, and determine whether you're in compliance, not only with the enrollment, but with anything else. So, that's the health department requirement, and that happens at the beginning of the season, but that, that's a projection. Okay? And as far as enrollment, yes. My client likes to have everybody enrolled early on, but there's people enroll because you could do a week, you could do three weeks, you could do six weeks, or whatever. So, you could be deciding to enroll in August. And so, to that extent, having, you know, all you're asking is, yeah, but, you know, at some point, he's allowed 360 on average and 420. If you ask before the season, that's what you're going to get. On the other hand, if you do as Claire, and this was the discussion we have, is something that is supposed to tell you what was our attendance, if that's the point, rather than enrollment. In the middle of July 15th, that's only half of the season. So, is that what you're trying to achieve midway through the thing, when you have another whole month, which is actually, I understand, the middle, the end of July and into August is the higher-
The heavy time.
Right, and all that was in the EIS that, you know, weekly scheduled. So, here, you know, we're not opposed to it, the question is, is how and where, and what is the logistics? So, I'll just give you an example. When you did Sabonic, it's a similar thing, you wanted a recording. When you did the charitable outings, you wanted to make sure they did their five charitable outings. So, you required as a covenant and condition of their site plan approval that they report to the town clerk, in that instance, by May 1st, to report what were the five charitable outings that they had in the prior year. And then ask for who the charity was, and the numbers, and then some other information, which, as to my knowledge, I did it for like eight years in a row, submit that letter to the town clerk. So, but that's sort of after the fact to say, here's what the enrollment is. As far as enforcement, I don't believe you're looking for this as an enforcement agent, because it wouldn't matter. It's not going to be evidence of the violation. If there is a violation, you would have to have an inspection, you would have to have account, just like when fire marshal goes to a bar and says you're over occupancy, then you need to go and actually physically do that. So, it's not an enforcement thing, but it's something that keeps everybody, so to speak, honest, and that we're reporting, and that is, this is what it is, and you can see that we're abiding by rules.
And it would make the most sense, in my opinion, to have an end-of-season attendance record certified by the owner, and that would, that would confirm that our conditions have not been, you know, exceeded.
Okay. End of season.
And that attendance is more appropriate than enrollment.
Do they have any day, day kids that come for the day?
All day kids.
Adult day kids.
It's all day kids.
Not in camp.
It's a week enrollment, whether the people attend for the entire week, doesn't matter.
It's a week, so they don't have day.
Yeah, so when you go and you want to-
Day pass.
Sign up for a week enrollment.
Week is a minimum.
So, you're saying you can't do a day pass?
Yeah, you can't get a pass.
That's what I think.
You can pay for the week and not show up.
Yeah, no, no, I think what the chair was asking if it was a single day type of thing.
Yeah.
Attendance is the most important.
September 30th? September 15th, dates?
September 30th, you said?
Yes.
Well, when does the tennis, when does the tennis camp close?
They go 18 weeks altogether.
Whether it's attended, do you go into October?
Yeah, when does the camp end?
Well, no, this is a day camp, we're more concerned about the-
The camp.
Camp is, ends basically at the end of August.
End of August.
So, that gives you a month to compile your attendance, get it certified, and submit it.
Submit it to whom?
Our planning department. Attention Claire.
Claire.
We need Janice.
Oh, Janice, yes, yeah, I meant Janice.
So, the Director of Plan Management.
Yes.
No, she's Director of Plan Management.
She's Director of Plan Management.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Title is Plan Management.
Oh, okay.
It's council title.
Okay. Want to make sure she gets the right title.
That's right.
No, that's good, that's productive.
So, can we talk about the 100-foot, like?
Where are we on this? Do you use, are you?
That's right after that section.
So, standard E is not met, the pre-existing buildings overnight?
So, let's talk about that in the first part.
Are being retained and are relocated? What, you have standards here, Claire.
What Claire is doing, which was something this planning board asked to examine from day one, but just to get a step back, so special exception standards. We're not asking for such, that's a special exception, because why? First, number one, if you go to the table use regulations, there's no listing for a day camp that's prohibited. Day camp is not permitted anywhere in the town of Southampton. Notwithstanding, we have special exception standards for such a use that's not permitted. Second, our use, if you recognize it with our COs, has overnight guests, you know, rights, cottages, whatever, and that doesn't meet the standards, the pre-existing nature, all of that was the basis why we had to start at the zoning board gift, as a pre-existing, non-conforming use. The standards do not apply, cannot be applied by the Board from a zoning standpoint. Nonetheless, Claire is saying, suggesting that these are reasonable planning standards that the Board could consider. Well, the Board did consider that. In fact, you asked that that be considered as an alternative from scoping, draft EIS, FEIS, and it's referred to in your finding statement. And to that extent, I just, here is a section out of your finding statement that deals with the 100-foot requirement that Claire is talking about. So, our point is, it doesn't apply because that was the finding of the Board. It doesn't apply, you're not applying. Two things, though. What we address, and this is what this plan shows, the blue area is the 100-foot line. So, the first question, that's on the north, by the way. On the west, we are maintaining where we can, because there's no structure or anything in that 100 feet. The 100 feet applies along the street, it applies along the south line. But you're, we're not doing anything along the south line, other than relocating the driveway, technically within the 100 feet. And the same along the frontage. But, so you're at 40 feet at the closest with the parking and the line. So, these are not identified by Claire as any of the issues, the west, south, or north, it's only the north, which we know is the issue.
That's the problem.
So, the first thing the Board did was have us relocate the tennis court and the volleyball court. And we are landscaping entirely within the 100 feet. Okay? So, I don't know what we need a fence for in this location. The fence, as Claire is trying to suggest, is to keep people out of someplace, and when you're going to keep them out of a landscaped area, it's not going to happen. So, the next, as you go west, you have the cottages. And you have drainage that's being asked for by the town engineer in this area.
What's the red line, Wayne?
So, the red line is the existing clearing line.
That's a vegetate line.
That's the existing clearing line. By the way, you look at our landscape plan, you see that we're augmenting and landscaping all along that, plus the six-foot fence that goes along that whole area. So, in this area, you've got existing underground structures, which you cannot landscape over the top. Okay? So, all that area there, so now we're talking about this little triangle, probably less than 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, also an area where the town engineer is asking for drainage to be put in. And so, just as an aside, the area here is about 50 feet to the property line.
That's all.
And over here, it's 100 feet. So, you're talking about this area that varies 50 to 100 feet. And only that little wedge of area that is existing along in activity, if you want to call it that. The nearest house is well over 180 feet from the edge clearing. Much further.
Plus, didn't we talk about jodging that stockade fence in to sort of follow the red line?
That's what we told you, is, yeah, the stockade fence comes here, and then the slope.
And then it comes out.
To get it at the top of the slope.
Yeah, keep the fence on the top of the slope, my client agrees to.
There's the fence.
We should be doing that, not putting the fence down.
Doesn't make sense. So, eight, nine, and 10 are for councilors?
Yes.
Yes. So, just to summarize, he'd be fine with planting here, 50 feet here, and the fence comes in on an angle, right?
I'm looking, and I'm looking for sound, sound attenuation.
And there's no camper activity in that area.
There is in here.
Oh, in there.
This is the lawn area behind the dining hall, and they do activities.
How many councilors in each cabin?
I don't know.
10?
No, in those cabins, there are four per cabin.
Are there any sound?
That's what we're limiting to.
Are there any, I think Jack is asking, are there any type of panels that can be put, attached to that stockade fence to further augment the sound attenuation?
Yeah, but you can't limit noise to six foot high.
They are, I know they exist, I've seen them, because I've done some research, they're absolutely high.
Are they actually, you can fasten them right to the fence?
Yes, you can fasten the material to the fence.
We'll look into it.
Will you look into it?
I think, you know, again, your question is-
Up to that point.
Usually, noise attenuation is coming from an exact source to a point that you're trying to hear, so we're putting a fence, but, you know, I don't know what else you could add to the fence, that, plus the vegetation. So, the question is, which noise source you're talking about, and where are you trying to?
Well, because the kids are all over the place, so, you know.
Well, they're not out by the road here, they're more at the sports court in the field, so if any sound attenuation should be-
So, all this activity, which was also, if you recall, has always been where the younger kids are, now is being all focused on this.
Mm-hmm. Which was good, that was a good change.
I have to say, when we first came to the planning board, that was your recommendation, and it took-
Long time.
Eight years to get that.
We're consistent, then, even though I wasn't here.
It's all your fault.
So, you're saying that these standards that Claire has written don't apply, is that what?
It doesn't, it doesn't apply.
It don't apply, but I think, I understand what you're doing.
But she's created a guide, some guidelines for us.
We've shown you what, how we're trying to achieve a lot of the issues that we're raising here by the answer.
I understand. So, what kind of an animal are you by the SIC code? Are you a day camp? What are you?
Look, the plan, the zoning board variance allows us to be a tennis club and day camp, as opposed to merely a tennis camp.
So, that's how this is labeled?
Remaining issues, which are a little, we have to deal with, discussing with the signage, the dumpster. And the last thing is that the neighbor has her dear fence on the property, it needs to be removed. That'll be a condition of approval.
So, you're going to do it?
They have some plans they have to get us, and we have to do referrals with them, with lands, and town engineer. So, we'll wait for those plans, which they sort of submit next week, and then we'll go from there.
Is February 13th a reasonable number date for all of this information?
You're going to keep this?
Yeah, I'm going to keep this.
This is the latest version.
Time.
Okay, there's no action, we just checked before. Okay, thank you.
All that for no action?
No.
You already did.
We did action.
Wayne, could you, can you check if there, there was a lot of, and I, I don't know where it goes, so, but there was a lot of concern about councilors that stayed overnight that were unsupervised or calling problems. Could we address that?
All right.
That's because you hire Irish councilors.
Is it, Wayne, is there a manager on site here?
Well, that's what I suggested.
Thank you.
You're the manager?
Okay, but there's got to be a way that the-
Wait a minute, how do I get in?
I had spoken to, to- That's what I asked, I asked for a point person on site.
What are we doing here? Oh, Edge of Edgewater.
I need, I need a-
Excuse me, that's actually where we are for the next item. You can call me Mark. Okay? Commercial facilities.
No, no. Commercial facilities.
I'm going to move on to the next item on the-
What did you just give, give me, Claire?
I gave you Edgewater, which is number 20.
Okay.
Could you give us a second to review here, because there's a lot of paperwork, I need to just, you know.
Just in summary, at the last meeting, Jackie wasn't here.
Oh, so this is just lines?
Yes, that's-
It was an open door.
I was trying to figure out what I was supposed to ask.
This is-
You don't have to ask anything, I gave individually to you. The part two, the applicant plus one, the site plan, the traffic study that we had talked about last time. Just to recap, the applicant has modified the application, there's no longer a restaurant on the eastern parcel, just the restaurant and the employee housing on the western parcel, and the improved parking to, improved parking to Edgewater. So, their traffic studies had a number of recommendations, which the planning board incorporated to their site plan approval, and that was a long way to mitigate. The applicant, the planning board had mentioned pastly not requiring left-hand, I'm sorry, prohibiting left-hand turns out of the main Edgewater. They looked at it, they agreed.
That's, thank you, thank you.
So, so we're going to incorporate that into the decision also. So, I have attached that language. The one other thing is that, that western access, you notice, is to also serve the house. So, we can't really prohibit it being a two-way access, but because the angle of parking, it will be one-way for the rest of the cars. By the nature of parking, the angle, you cannot turn around.
So, it's going to go up and around?
They'll have to go up and around.
And use the.
And we talked about sort of signage, signage.
The internal signage to go along with it. Yes. So, that's all part of this. It's incorporated in the project. I'll make sure, because during the internal signage and the traffic. That's in the engineer's report.
KLD engineer.
Yeah, just identify yourself. Sorry, this is Val, Phil, it's 50. And they address, the engineer also addressed.
What I asked. Great, great. Thank you.
That is attached to my EAF.
This is a thorough traffic study.
It is. I thought it was clear and has had a number of good recommendations for the site.
Keep it.
So, based on that, we had that discussion. They came back with the left-hand, no left-hand turn. You had agreed to omit that. So, I've prepared one for your consideration today.
And does that also mean a complete application?
No, they go back to the zoning board appeal. You'll be secret for yourself and the zoning board.
Oh, we're just doing secret then?
And when they get, if they get the zoning board's variance, then we'll come back to you.
So, we have no large impacts here?
No large impacts.
Just small.
Small water.
Because the first time we looked at it, you thought the potentially large impact was the traffic. And so, you identified, you relayed that to the applicant. They've modified their application accordingly.
Well, also moving out, getting rid of that other restaurant, which was. Well, that's major. That's a big use change. Yeah. Can I just ask about ownership now? Are they still single and separate owners of the parcels?
Yes, it's still single and separate. And, you know, this is after the last meeting. One of the reasons is that if the ZBA does determine to merge the properties, it actually creates a more non-conforming parcel. Because in this zoning district, if you have a motel, it's one use per 40,000 square feet. So, if they're going to merge these properties and allow all these uses, it would actually make it more non-conforming, but it would be looking.
That's a good point. I never realized that.
That's interesting.
Because also, that would open for future development. They could do a sort of regional, much larger scale project if you merge these. Do you even want to tell the ZBA we support keeping the prop pretty single and separate?
Let them decide.
Let them decide. Okay.
I haven't seen them. So, I haven't. So, recommending, based on the information.
You want to read any kind of inclusion or anything?
Oh, this is the resolutions prepared in the packet. It talks about the review of the traffic study in the part two and part three, and found environmental issues with the proposal was designed. And the board hereby adopts and makes a difference.
And the concerns for impact were addressed with the traffic study and compliance by the applicant.
That's right.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Close extensions. One, two, three, four in favor.
Five and two.
One, two, three, four. Five in favor, two absent.
We'll have this back to side frame then as soon as you get.
Just want to jump back. 17 is off the agenda. Always good news. And then, I have 192 West Mont Rock Highway. Another room before Christmas, Jackie wasn't here. 19. It's 192 West Mont Rock Highway. He had to review their internal signage, and he wanted one more sign on the property. So, they provided the signs on the plans. And this is a resolution to approve that. And this is also a resolution to require the covenant that we need between the two properties. This is 192. This is the gas station.
Gas station.
So, you just asked me to write it up, and I had it did at the last meeting, but I did it at this meeting, and then we're going to sign, acknowledge signing of the plans. So, it's all in order. So, those are the two modifications. As I mentioned, it's not set for summer.
Where is it? Do we have it?
It's at the very back of the packet.
Oh, it's at the back of the packet, so.
Here it is.
192.
It's like three or four pages in from the very back.
Okay, let me find it. 192. Interior signage.
The door in the back, you wanted to see it.
We have cross-access? We have cross-access?
And then the cross-access. In this case, we wanted the cross-access season agreement because we already had one place, the cabinet, prior to the signature. However, they're having a difficult time getting stop and shop to sign on the dotted line.
Oh, we talked to Janice about that. Janice will intercede.
So, we have a covenant, you know, that individual person is going to be required.
She's got to deal with the bus stop platform that's been there.
So, the, and then the applicant has provided a covenant, just to make sure we have it, and then we'll have it used in the place prior to CEO. Gives them some time. So, I'm recommending a adopted resolution, and then Phil is going to sign the plans.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Robin. All in favor? Close extensions, five in favor, two absent.
All right, we have one back.
One back. Ready back.
Oh, okay. Six, one absent. I didn't see. Tucked away.
He's a stealth member.
Two add-ons. Those and fishes. This is supposed to be on the agenda for February 13. Eric Redmond called me today, said he's been being greased. Could we put it off to February?
No, I think we should all go to Greece.
I know.
Public hearing?
The pre-submission conference, yes. So, he's asking us to put it on February 27, and we can do that very easily. We rescind the previous application, sorry, resolution and adopt resolution due to February 27.
Okay, so, the motion is to rescind the prior public hearing notice for.
Those and fishes.
For those and fishes.
And schedule it for February 27.
And scheduled for Feb. 27. Motion?
Motion.
By Robin. Second by Gloria. All in favor? Close extensions, six in favor, one absent.
And the last thing is, I have a subdivision that was approved by you under the name of EME, MC, MTG, and Duolac. And they have a 90-day extension for their submission of plans. They're very close. So, you're getting it done.
Okay, motion for 90.
Motion by Dennis, second by Phil. All in favor? Close extensions.
Thank you for your work today.
Six in favor. Okay. One absent. Is Jackie coming?
Yeah, Jackie's there.
What is Jackie doing?
She has terribly hard to surround. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Did we have Anthony?
Anthony was first.
Yeah, he did.
It was just so long ago.
I have double checks. He's a smashed week.
Jackie is closing herself.
So, she's Middle Line Highway. She's an extension.
Yeah, and Phil, I want you to complain about that.
Domen is an extension.
Complain about what? I'm sorry.
The eighth extension from Middle Line Highway.
Yes.
Go for it, Phil. Take your civility hat off.
I already did.
I know. Yeah, she doesn't have very much. Spent the whole day. Are you here for?
We'll be upstairs. The rabbit.
Yes. And the caverns.
I don't know.
Can't see.
Can't see much of here.
It's painful. Where's your food?
No, leaving. Can you get through?
Of course. We struck here for your council. While you were gone.
No, sorry, I was on the phone with an applicant that has something on the agenda, but I just had to touch base with her.
Well, we have some applicants here, so, we have Sternberg, Harvey Sternberg here. I think the first one is number six. Number six? Number 13. She didn't know. Number six is eight.
I'm sorry, I left the resolution in the desk.
If it's six, there's eight.
Do you mind if I run it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll put it to the side when I'm talking to the other applicant. I'll just go through it because I have it.
Who are you here for, Wayne?
Act was, Domena.
Oh, Domena. That's just an extension, yeah.
Yep. That's the number six also.
That's an extension also. Yeah, two extensions.
The eighth extension, I understand?
Seventh, I was.
Seven? Seventh extension?
I told you what happened. The engineer died.
Oh, yes.
So, Pat Seco was still in the mass, he had to do engineering. He hired this guy Bernard, and we just do both the health department and your common driveway plan. And he died.
Wow.
After the final condition of approval. So, then, we couldn't, you know, we've got to get somebody who can make all the revisions, go back to the health department. And it took the client with Pat Seco a year to finally find somebody. But then Pat goes and joins VHB.
Yeah.
And then, of course, Pat said, well, it's not my job. I'm not the engineer. Finally, I got hooked up with VHB. He backed up the health department. But then Pat left VHB.
And he's back on his own.
And we finally got Paul Belandro to address the town engineer with the driveway plans that are all approved, but the town engineer or new engineers are requiring all sorts of new things for the common driveway. So, that's where we're at.
So, we talked about number six?
Yeah, we just talked about it. What do you say, Phil? You happy? So, number six is Middle Line Highway, 90-day extension.
I mean, death is no excuse in my book.
Okay, motion by Phil, second by.
Second.
Robin, all in favor? Close, five, one, two, or four in favor, three absent. And the other one is number nine. Domena, which is a 90-day extension.
Yep, that's for submission of plans.
Okay.
That will give them until April 5, 2020.
Okay. Motion by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? Opposed, five, four, four in favor, yeah.
Sorry, that was Robin and Gloria?
And Gloria. Okay, you're done, Wayne.
Thank you.
You're done. And now, we'll do.
If we could go to Sternberg.
Mm-hmm. Number 13.
So, I have resolutions for you and just some maps that the applicant gave us.
Good night, please.
And this is the map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is a standard requirement when the applicant has to clear any disturbance based upon South County Department of Health test holes and test walls. So, in this case, we did note in the pre-application report that there was significant slopes, kettle holes, deep slopes, hills, very hilly terrain. So, when we were looking at the common driveway, we did look at that closely and asked the engineering division to make sure the common driveway location was appropriate so that the route and carrying disturbance to these test holes would essentially follow the same path as the common driveway. So, also in looking at that, too, we did have a question regarding just access to the parcel, which we did get a access in common driveway easement samples that the applicant is proposing as part of the submission as well, which Kathleen makes that. And so, with those two issues being resolved, I do have a resolution here that would permit them to have the disturbance. And then, I did ask the applicant to provide a map showing where the test holes will be located. So, you can see there'll be a test hole on lot number two and a test well just set up there. Okay? So, this resolution basically states that the pre-up report, you know, knew that there are steep slopes, so we're essentially avoiding the kettle hole and the depression. We're curving around that instead of, like, you know, disturbing through that. And then, we did have the common to make the super town engineer on the 30th, which is in the resolution. And it is conditioned upon three things, appropriate erosion control, submission of a letter claiming no vested rights toward final approval of the subdivision, and submission of a new access or common driveway easement providing access over those parcels that are in common ownership to the applicant. So, that would be as a condition of final.
You okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Motion?
Where is this? I don't see a road on this map.
This is off the Noah's path.
But where is the road on this map?
It was not in there. If you want to look, there is.
A reduced map.
I did print out the subdivision. So, that's kind of like a zoom in to show you. But if you look past the resolution, you have this.
Oh, sorry, I didn't get to that page.
It's okay, no problem. So, this will give you bearings. So, the easement actually goes over a developed parcel.
Got it.
They are proposing this easement to go over this, I would say, like, you know, interior parcel. And then, the test holes are going to be up here.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't see this page.
So, the L-shaped easement exists. They're proposing a new easement. It's a little bit different. The easement is different from Joe actually. Do you see the? Here? And then expands right there because we're going to need to do some drainage, but we're avoiding this depression with the actual physical common driveway and the disturbance. So, this is just.
Is the open space being dedicated?
Yeah.
The open space is being dedicated, right? I'm trying to refresh.
Yeah, I saw that. It was.
Okay. I just needed to refresh what was left in my recollection.
You're under that in the exit copy noted on.
Okay, thank you. So, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? Opposed, extensions, four in favor, three absent. You have one left. Hill Creek Heights at the Performance Farm.
Yes, so, this is the applicant I was on the phone with, and I'm sorry to keep you waiting. So, this is Mountain Heights. If you, here, I have resolutions for you. And they also have a map.
Just to a brief.
At face value, really no issues, but it just, they are trying to dissolve the common area. It also references HOA parcel in my resolution. But if you look on the map, that it's at the very end of your little packet, you'll see that there was a triangular parcel on the corner of Noah's Road and Saicarver Court that was supposed to have the subdivision identification sign. So, we reviewed a planting plan. They created, we asked for them as a condition of approval to create a HOA parcel. So, they did that prior to signature, but now, the current, the property has now been sold to a separate entity, and that entity no longer wants to have the subdivision just revat, got the revised prints in Mylar. So I just have to look them over since I just got them. So hopefully this can be resigned. But we actually did sign it in August 2019.
Motion.
Robin?
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, four in favor, three absent. You have one left. Hill Creek Heights is a performance bond.
Yes. So this is the applicant. I was on the phone with him. I'm sorry to keep you away. So this is Hill Creek Heights. If you, here, I have resolutions for you. And they also have a map.
Thank you. You just, just do a brief.
At face value, really no issues. But it just, it's, they are trying to dissolve the common area. It's also references HOA parcel in my resolution. But if you look on the map, that it's at the very end of your little map. You'll see that there was a triangular parcel on the corner of New York Road and Psych Harbor Court that was supposed to have the subdivision identification sign. So we reviewed a planting plan. They created, we asked for them as a condition of approval to create that HOA parcel. So they did that prior to signature. But now the current, the property has now been sold to a separate entity. And that entity no longer wants to have the subdivision identification sign and is proposing to revert this portion back to open space and asking the town to accept it as open space. But to do so, they do have to dissolve or abandon the HOA. But it's actually, I was just on the phone with William German, who's the applicant representative, which is the applicant manager at SME, which is also Psych Harbor Woods Development. So he just asked me to change some of the wording based upon a recent discussion from Ag's office. So I am gonna be changing in paragraph three. He asked me to change the language, but still essentially mean the same thing, that the applicant obtained a CPS seven grant of approval instead of calling it an HOA agreement. Because I guess what they did was like a quicker version of HOA.
Say it again.
So it's gonna be obtained a CPS seven grant of approval. And you'll note that he, there's also the letter from the AG's office, which is like the 2018. So they referenced it as the CPS seven treatment. So the AG's office just had a little bit of concern with us calling it an HOA agreement when it truly obtained a CPS seven grant of approval. I am also going to, wherever I reference HOA parcel, I'm just gonna write common area slash HOA parcel. Because you'll see on the map, it's actually labeled common area, open space with identification sign. So I'm just gonna call it what it is on the map as to kind of what it is.
Does the HOA have to vote to agree to this?
From what my understanding is...
There is no HOA.
Is that it just has to be filed.
Right. There's no real HOA. So in theory, it's on the HOA specifically from this signage. That's all it's for. That's the only responsibility the HOA had was that?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't other rights that an HOA might, and people have on this property that we don't know about.
You don't have a closing.
I don't have a closing. Okay, it's a good thing.
So in the resolution, I'm just gonna call it common area slash HOA parcel. Because that's kind of like how we understood it to be. So wherever that is. And then under paragraph five, I'm gonna say dissolved or abandoned the grant of approval. And then I'm gonna put CPS seven.
CPS seven.
Yeah. But essentially, we had always really wanted it to be open space. So essentially, it's reverting back to what the pre-application report suggested and recommended. So on that, I don't have any issues. So, but to make sure that it is re-vetated and brought into, back into its native state, I am requesting that there's a re-vetation plan. So that I will review this. And I'm actually, I've already been contacted by the local architect. So to bring it back to the species, there's some disturbance on there. So we're gonna work on that re-vetation plan. And I'm also asking for a performance bond to make sure that that is...
So we're gonna put all that in the resolution?
Yeah, so it's on.
Okay.
So it's basically a performance bond, re-vetation, and recommending pound board acceptance of that.
Motion?
Second.
By Robin. Second by Gloria?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension.
Aye.
Four in favor, three absent. That's it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? Close extensions, four in favor, three absent.